Welcome everyone to tonight's school committee meeting. To get started, I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance. Dave Fescucci, do you mind leading us on the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are a little shorthanded at the moment. Chuck DeCoste, who won his election to the Board of Selectmen, well, he hasn't actually resigned from the school committee yet. He is not going to be here tonight. Mike Mizoney was on his way and had a car mishap, flat tire, far enough away that it's going to take him a little while to get here. So, we need to reorganize after the election that happened on Saturday, but we're going to defer that down the agenda until Mike gets here. He's going to stay in touch with me so that if at some point we realize he's not going to get here, we'll figure out what to do. But right now, he's fully planning on being here. It's just a question of how quickly he can get through the traffic and get his car situation straightened out. So, we're going to defer that. We will also defer the subcommittee appointments, and we'll talk about that after we do the reorg. So, we're going to go all the way down to the consent agenda, minutes, April 30th, 2015, oath to bills and payroll. Can I get a motion on that?
Make a motion, accept the consent agenda, second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on those? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, none, great. Interested citizens, anybody like to talk about anything? Come up to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll race ahead to presentation, the youth risk behavior survey, planning at the middle school and high school.
Before we start, I have a few acknowledgements that came in after the fact, so to speak. I sent you an email yesterday in regard to the release of rankings of schools by U.S. News. And I was very pleased to be able to send out the email stating that we're a gold medal recipient. We ranked number 13, it's the highest we've ever ranked. I can't, I don't have any data that says that we've ever ranked any higher than that. Quantitative analysis on four variables. First one was stat, or, there, paper there, college index readiness, which is something that's become more and more important. It's been more active in the last two years. We've talked about it a lot more in the state. Obviously, math proficiency and English proficiency, and the fourth factor was student-teacher ratio. Ours was actually a little higher than it has been when I trace the history back, and that is definitely a sign of our budget times and growing enrollment in our high school. Very proud of this accomplishment. I'd like to commend our students, our staff, our leadership team, and of course, our parents and our community for giving us necessary support to provide exemplary learning environments for our students. So, kudos to everybody. Second acknowledgement this evening, two meetings ago, I had talked about one of our high school students, Ruth Ballard, who won a poetry competition, and she's moved on in this competition, and her actual poem is posted in Boston during the month of May on the red line. So, if you're riding the red line out there, you can see one of our students who has her poem actually plastered all over. It's my understanding that she was one of two students who won the competition to have their poem highlighted along the subway. So, very proud of that accomplishment as well. So, congratulations to Ruth. We have a Russell Street art show this evening, a very busy time of year, lots of great student artwork. So, thanks to the art teacher, Mrs. Romano, and the students for putting out some great quality work for all of us to enjoy. And obviously, tonight, we have our high school awards evening. It's unfortunate that we had a conflict with school committee this evening, but I'd like to also congratulate all of the award recipients who will be receiving those awards within the next hour. So, congratulations. That does it for acknowledgements, and we can move on to the Yarbus presentation. Dr. Branko isn't here yet, so we're going to do the high school first, if that's okay. And we have Mrs. Turner with her, Dr. Turner with us this evening, and I'll rely on Dr. Turner to introduce the group that's presenting this evening.
Good evening. I am here with Maureen McMahon, the school psychologist. She and I worked with Chris Perrell to analyze all the data from the youth risk behavior survey from Emerson Hospital. There were 10 major areas that we looked at: alcohol use, dietary behavior, drug use, sexual behavior, suicide and self-harm, bullying, cyberbullying, driving safety, school safety, stress and tobacco use. And you've already had the presentation from the Emerson Hospital, so I won't get into all the data there. But there were some areas of concern that we looked at as far as the results. The first one is violence-related behaviors, and for students who have been bullied in school over the past 12 months. We're unable to track any trends with that, but we did notice that the current sophomore class, so last year's ninth grade class, is slightly above the aggregate, so they're at 12 percent where the aggregate is 8 percent. So, we're keeping an eye on that cohort. The responses that we've had to deal with bullying behaviors, we've had a cyber safety program for students in January of this year. We also had a cyber safety program for parents in March that was put on by the district attorney's office, I believe. We conducted a "How Full Is My Bucket?" program, so that's a program where we look at filling people's buckets rather than taking things out, kind, random acts of kindness, things like that. Our advisory program does annual anti-bullying activities, health education classes cover anti-bullying as well. We've hired a school psychologist to help, and we've put on anti-bullying displays in the lobby at Littleton High School. So, going forward, we know, looking at the data for the middle school as well, that last year's sixth grade cohort is above the aggregate as well. So, next year, when they are eighth graders, we'll be working with the middle school staff to plan a smooth transition for them and make sure we have programs in place for them. Another area of concern was stress levels of our students. People, students have experienced a very high stress level due to academic workload, and we are above the aggregate for the freshman and sophomore years. We know in high school, there's a lot of high-stakes testing that goes on. That could be contributing to that. College application process is also very stressful. We address those areas in health education with the stress management unit. We also refer students to counseling staff if that's needed, and one of the things that we're looking at going forward is to implement some stress management relaxation techniques and training for not only the students but also the staff as well so that we can model that good behavior. We saw concerns with alcohol use. 20 percent of our students have reported attending parties in homes where alcohol use by teens is allowed. Now, this is a tricky statistics. We don't know if these homes are even in Littleton, really, so it's kind of difficult to know what that statistic means. We do have an alcohol education unit in our health education class. We also have social host letters that go home yearly that are jointly signed by the superintendent and the district attorney that are sent home to parents to address that. Another area of concern is self-harm, that our students are cutting themselves, or burning themselves, or bruising themselves. In 2008, the youth risk behavior survey indicated a decrease in this behavior from 15 percent in 2006 to 11 percent in 2008. But we remain concerned that this statistic has been steady at 11 percent since then. So, what we do with this is we are referring students to the nurse when needed for medical care, also the counseling staff. We have the nurse and the counseling staff monitor them as needed. We also contact parents and provide appropriate counseling and medical referrals as needed. What we're looking forward to doing is researching prevention and intervention strategies and programs because this is a huge problem, and it's becoming more of a bonding behavior than it used to be, so we're seeing more and more kids do that. Sexual behavior was a concern. We did notice that the survey indicated a decrease in sexual behavior over time, so 37 percent in 2008 to 27 percent in 2014 for students that are sexually active. We are noticing little trends in specific sexual behaviors that we're keeping an eye on, and we have a sex education unit for our, in our health curriculum to help deal with that. We were pleased to see that there were some areas of improvement with our students as well. For driving safety, the percentage of students who have driven in a car with an impaired minor has decreased since 2012, and pretty significantly, from 19 percent to 6 percent of our students, so that's a huge decrease, which is nice. We've done every, the Every 15 Minute Program, I don't know if any of you have ever heard of that, it's an amazing program. So, we don't do that yearly. We tend to do it every three years. It's pretty powerful, and I think yearly would be a lot for students, but every student at the high school will see this program at least once. We also did a mock accident in collaboration with the Littleton Police Department and Fire Departments last year in April. We have a school resource officer to help with that as well. Suicide, we've seen a percentage of students that are considering suicide decreasing over time, from 17 percent in 2004 to 6 percent in 2014. So, we have a signs of suicide program in Littleton Public Schools that we've been implementing for over seven years. We have an advisory program where hopefully we are helping our students build relationships with their advisors in order to get help. We also did a suicide prevention training for faculty in February of this year from the Luck Center, which is the Let Us Know Crisis Center, and they deal specifically with suicide prevention and training. We've noticed that alcohol use in general has decreased over time since 2008, and percentage of using, a percentage of students using drugs has decreased over time. We have our health education units do drug education and alcohol education as well. We've had drug sniffing dogs in the school in March of last year, and Chris Herrent's Purple Project in January of last year was a pretty powerful program that the students were able to see. And last year's eighth graders were able to go, and it was, I got to see, it was a pretty impressive program. And we've had students in the high school continue with projects based on that to keep that going. We also have a school resource officer that helps with that. Another highlight that we've addressed this year is we've had, we're always worried about proper nutrition for our students, and we had Mark O'Meara, who's a registered dietitian, come in and speak to, we had an all-school assembly, talking with kids about what should be on your plate. It was nice because it wasn't, "Don't eat this, don't eat this, it's, this is what your plate should look like. These are the things that are going to fuel your body. This is how often you would, you should eat." And it was pretty interesting to hear that. One last recommendation that we have upon finishing our analysis of the data is that we need to be doing something about dating violence in our schools. And we don't have, that's not a huge concern statistically at this point, but we do know it's something that we're not addressing at this point. Dr. Harrington and I have talked about appropriate programs. There's the Yellow Dress, which is an amazing program. But what we're finding is that there aren't really programs that address female on male violence, and we need to get rid of the stigma around that, so if it's happening, whether it be the controlling behavior, the manipulative behavior, or violence, that males are feeling comfortable enough to come forward, and there isn't a stigma around that. So, we're working on finding an appropriate program to introduce to our students. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm particularly impressed by the driving safety numbers. That was such a positive trend. And I think that you've been hearing about this and working on this, I think, or hearing the administration's working on this for a couple of years, and with the accident that, it's a fake, it sounds like a fake accident, but the-
The mock accident, yes.
The mock accident, thank you. That took place last year, I think, it was very moving. We saw footage of that after the fact, and it was moving to us, and so, students who were there, I'm sure, it was very, pretty powerful indeed. In terms of suicide and self-harm, you mentioned that the signs of suicide program is helping to detect the students who are in need. They're taking that place at both the high, both the middle school and the high school, or just the middle school?
Yes, at the high school as well.
Okay, fantastic, because I know that program has been in use for a while. In terms of the sexual behavior, said that it was trending downward, but that there were some other figures that were worrisome there. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, behaviors, oral sex behaviors, having four or more partners, those kinds of things. So, we're seeing little blips in the data that we need to be aware of and we need to monitor, but overall, the behavior has decreased, yes.
Do we have a comprehensive sex ed unit, or is it?
We do, as part of the health curriculum.
Okay, great. And then, in terms of dating violence, what I've heard, I haven't seen any programs, like you said, sort of a dearth, a lack of programs focused on that issue. I've seen and heard of some schools that moved that into their sex ed unit, so it's not just about necessarily sexual relationships, but it's about healthy relationships and consent and having that conversation as well.
And it's part of our health curriculum as well.
Excellent, fantastic. And then, my last question is, what's the plan to address the sleeplessness that so many students are facing?
We are actually looking at our scheduling, or we have a scheduling committee that's looking at what's going to be best for our students going forward. So, we're in the process of looking at our schedule and what we do with it, maybe considering late start times, things. We're looking at all the research right now.
Because I think for a number of years, and this is true of every, every school district, or most school districts, in Littleton, I know our, I think it's, more than 90 percent of students for the past many, many cycles of the WRBS have not been getting enough sleep each night.
Yes.
Nine, more than 90 percent, and it's gone back so far that you can actually see there's maybe a little bit, a little blip or two in students are, around when you'd expect them to start getting cell phones, but even 15, 20 years ago, there's still 80, 90 percent of students not getting enough sleep each night, and that's very linked with the school's start times.
That, it's interesting that you bring up the cellphone issue because that was talked about in the cyberbullying safety, that a lot of parents should be taking our cell phones, taking the devices away from our students when they go to bed.
Or teaching the students to be able to say, "Okay, I'm going to leave that over there," and sort of self-monitor their behavior. And I actually, since we're talking about that, that's actually a great way to reduce stress as well as putting the cellphone away.
Yes, because cyberbullying behaviors normally happen at home. We don't see that kind of stuff happening in the schools. A lot of it's happening at home, and when kids are on their cell phones and late at night, and then kids aren't sleeping. Yeah, it's all connected.
I'd love to hear more about, it's too bad that Principal Harrington can't be here, but I'd love to hear more about the idea of changing the scheduling. I know that he was talking about that a couple of years ago, and I just want to make sure that it doesn't just talk about it and we actually start making some progress on that. And I know we were working on that two years ago or so, and I think we got sidetracked when the NIAS report came in. We also started focusing on that instead. And last question about this, with the NIAS report, they, in the NIAS report, they're recommending that OHS examine its health plans and gather and review relevant data related to the school's health services. Do you know if that, again, this isn't necessarily all under your, under your purview, so I might be asking the wrong person, but do you know if that, if those efforts have been made, or if they're in progress, or what the status of that is?
Honestly, I don't know.
That's a Principal Harrington question, and the health nurse, and also our lead health nurse, so, something we can ask at a later date.
Sure, thank you, thank you very much.
No, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of, just a different things here. So, the stress one there, you know, it catches me there. And I see in your things here, about talking about it at school, any thoughts on outreach to parents also about the, you know, the suicides and the stress, there's stress induced by school, there's stress induced by parents' expectations of children. That could also have a major piece on here, and maybe looking holistically at how we do the educational outreach and techniques that parents may need to be thinking about with it there. And that brings into, as it relates to like the bullying pieces there, see with the suicide part there, you talked about it being sort of a long-term thought plan that's been acting on it and integrated across a couple of different areas. Have we thought about doing that relative to things like bullying a little bit more aggressively there and not treating it as a separate program, but maybe integrating it more into, and maybe you already are, it just didn't come across that way in the presentation, so that it's not a separate topic, well, it's a separate topic, but it's strategies and integration into the thing, the solutions would seem to be very similar, trusting relationships, sharing about the thesis there, which is very similar techniques that you talked about under the suicide.
Those are connected too.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean, I think making sure we're looking at it holistically there was the other thing. And then, the other one is, it didn't show up in here, but, you know, have we noticed any trend of e-cigs and vaping, replacing tobacco use, and that increasing at the, at the high school level?
There wasn't a lot of concern in that. The numbers were pretty low. We weren't above the aggregate and those kinds of things, so.
Right, thank you.
When you guys were doing the analysis specifically at the high school, were you guys surprised or caught off guard by any of the numbers or areas that you thought you had under, not you guys, but the town or in the district had better control and then were realizing maybe we weren't quite as effective as we thought we were?
I think we were really surprised at the number of students reporting that they're having parties at homes where alcohol is allowed.
And I'm going to echo what Daryl said, and Daryl made the point two weeks ago when we had the presentation. As concerned as we need to be as a school district, there are so many aspects of what's being reported on here that are beyond our direct control as teachers, administrators, and really comes back onto the parents because we have them for 16 hours a day, and two full days where you guys don't get them at all. You know, have we thought about suggestions for strategies and programming for, you know, families so that a lot of these, these good ideas can happen outside of the building, which in all likelihood is going to be more important than anything we could possibly do inside the building? You know, is there programs we can do that, you know, invite parents to come in and hear some of the things that we're telling their children so they can reinforce those behaviors?
We're doing more and more and more of that as we go on. This is a trend that isn't specific to Merrimack Valley, I mean, it's, I'm going to say, beyond national, international trend that we're seeing. Every, every area I've been in, we've been putting programs in places for years and years. Bottom line is, we have our students' sex number of hours a day, and parents are still the most predominant influence on their children. I've been in some communities where we worked with, obviously a larger school district, but we worked with the police department and had parent meetings, and then after that, we did what we could to put the hammer down and actually charge some parents. And that did make somewhat of a difference. It certainly wasn't long-lasting, but it certainly is a concern. Underage drinking, more often than not, leads to other, other types of activities that aren't healthy, so. You know, definitely something we're going to continue to brainstorm.
I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, it shouldn't just be the school department, you know, we may be the biggest drivers, but there should be participation by the public safety groups, parking wreck, you know, and, you know, churches, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, PTA. I mean, there's enough other groups that would be interested in this type of thing and understanding what's going on and helping them to focus their strategies both individually and collectively, that there might be some merit to doing some programming and getting past the students and going right to the support networks that they have in their lives beyond what goes on, you know, eight to three or two in the afternoon.
I mean, communities that are successful at dealing with those kinds of things, it really is a community effort.
Yeah, it has to be.
And that's really the only way that you're going to get to the bottom of it, and obviously, instilling greater responsibility in our kids, which we, I think we do a good job of.
a good job of. And we're always looking, looking for different ways to, to enhance what we're doing in the school system.
Thank you.
And I just have a couple of questions, trace or comments maybe rather than questions. I won't put you on the spot.
That's okay.
Uh, as you recall, we hired a psychologist for the high school. We looked at data over the last five, six years and, and we, we saw some trends that we were concerned about, worried about. We did this through the reorganization of our special education program. So it was on a zero cost to, to the school district. And I, I feel, and Principal Harrington also feels, that this has made a tremendous difference in our school. Like anything else, things don't change overnight. It takes time. We put more supports in place and, uh, as, as this evolves, I think we're gonna see a downward trend in some of these other areas because of that additional staff. But it does, it does worry me when, uh, as you know, we do these things and, and it's cost neutral. Because sometimes we can't do that, but we were fortunate this time. Uh, the, the bringing in of parents, uh, for seminars or, or evenings to talk about these things, I would certainly encourage the, the high school to continue to do that. One area of mine that I've talked about before, and, uh, we're gonna hear about it during the middle school presentation as well, and it really focuses around the stress of students. And I realize school alone isn't stressing our, our kids out. And exercise is, is part of dealing with stress and, and I think we're, we do a good job of that, but we have a, a target group at the middle school that we need to, uh, really take a look at in terms of why they're not exercising very much. But we need to do whatever we can within our schools to, uh, minimize the stress. And, and I'm not suggesting that we, we don't continue to have rigorous curricula. But at the same time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pose the suggestion one more time, that, uh, we need to seriously consider how we can better communicate as teachers and, and general staff in terms of giving our kids assignments, so that we know what our kids have to do every night. And, uh, many years ago, before technology, we used to, even in high schools, uh, some high schools would have a, a book that they would send around from class to class. And then a teacher would be able to look at it and see what the load was for that week in terms of assignments. In this day and age, we have technology that certainly can do that. High school is a little more difficult, especially in the junior and senior year, because the scheduling is so individualistic, so to speak. Middle school though, I think that's something that we can do. But, uh, I mean, our, we know that our students are under significant stress close to the ending of a quarter during those exam weeks, uh, major projects. And, and I think we can really do a better job of trying to coordinate when our students are getting work and how much they're getting. So I would urge you to, uh, perhaps bring that back to the leadership team and, and see if there isn't a way we could, we could do that a little better than we are.
Can I just make one comment in that vein, which is a great point. I think what would also help is if the staff is communicating to the students what success really is. And it's not necessarily an A or a hundred. It's improvement over time, achieving goals, realistic goals that are set, you know, term by term, subject by subject, so that, you know, gradually they're gonna get to, to where they ultimately wanna be. But it's not do or die, you know, all or, all or nothing. It's not the way to think about success. I think if we can put that message in place, it will help them alleviate, you know, enjoying the process as much as the actual outcome. And then again, you do that and you create lifelong learners and you don't, you know, create people that are just trying, sprinting to whatever finish line they think they have. And when they cross it, they're done. So, just, just in that vein.
And just a, a general comment about hours of sleep. Uh, you know, as Alex pointed out, this has been going on way before technology has swept the, uh, students' arena, so to speak. Uh, as a district, we've looked at this and, and I've brought numbers to you as a school committee. And if we were wanting to do something and keeping in mind that our elementary students shouldn't be starting at seven thirty either, uh, we'd be looking at approximately $200,000 in additional costs to have our students start within an hour time period. Districts many, many years ago had the flexibility of, uh, having double the bus fleet. But when things tightened up in the early two thousands, virtually every district that you could ever think of, the first thing they looked at is developing greater efficiencies in their bus rooms. And they developed staggered school start times. And as a result of that, we've, we're no different than, than many other, other districts. So the only way to truly change the way we're doing business is to put more money into it. Because as your superintendent, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of having, uh, elementary students starting at seven thirty in the morning. I think it's too early. Uh, just my, my own philosophy and, and it is researched back. So.
Do you think it's too early for the middle school and high school kids to start at seven thirty?
I would like to see them start later, but, uh, again, I can't do anything unless we have the money to, to make those changes. I would like to see our students start, uh, between eight and nine o'clock. I think that would be more appropriate. But you also have to remember that even if you push the starting times forward, that's not necessarily gonna mean that our kids are gonna sleep more. They are still gonna have to do homework. They are still going to be involved in other activities. So, uh, please don't think if we put money into this, that it's gonna solve that issue. It may help, but I don't know how much it's gonna help. And, and I think that's where we need to, to be methodical. We perhaps need to have some focus groups set up with some of our students and, and find out from them exactly why sleep seems to be minimized. And, and, you know, we need to, we need to do, we need to employ a thoughtful process as we move forward here. I, I just, to be honest with you, I really don't believe that if our students started at eight o'clock, our high school and middle school students, that we would see significant increases in hours of sleep.
I, I mean, I think it circles back to the idea that what we do will have an effect, but what parents do and families do.
Exactly.
Is, you know, three, five, six, tenfold more impactful than anything we, we can do. Sometimes it's because we are constrained and there's just not a lot we can do. But other things, you, I think you're, what you're saying goes, we can do everything right and they'll still do it wrong. For whatever reasons, they have. And, you know, and, and it gets dicey for us to tell them exactly how we think they should be taking care of their children day in and day out. You know, we can make suggestions and we can explain to them what the impacts are and what the benefits could be for modifying behaviors and things like that. But at the end of the day, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, rightfully so.
And, you know, I wanna agree. I know, I'm not necessarily jumping, wanna jump to any conclusion about what the answer is. I'd like to understand what, what the range of options are, what we think the range of issues are and the range of costs with it. So we can make an informed decision, not an emotional decision.
Exactly. And if we're right, if we don't, if we don't do something, we'll know why we didn't do it.
Yeah. And, and the end result may be no change, but I think we'd have a better understanding about why we came to that conclusion or a recommendation to change. But these are the other factors that go along with that. And if they don't come into play, it's gonna counterbalance. You know, it's an informed decision.
Many districts have tasked a task force or a community group with, or their wellness committees with this work of, because every district does have different school schedules and, uh, bus contracts and that sort of thing. It is, and you also get the added benefit of having the parents involved who, as we found out from our, um, school calendar discussion, uh, are very involved in the whole logistics of, of everything we do in terms of when, uh, our schools are opening. If we have, had that sort of community group or, um, not, not just the community members, but also the administration of teachers, of students, um, that group might be able to go through all the research, what other districts have done, what's worked, what hasn't, what the options are, perhaps a little faster than, uh, than, than we might be able to. And also maybe with a little more agility than our administrative team, which is already, you know, you guys are doing so much with PD and with, um, Common Core and with the educator evaluations. I hate to say, here's one more thing, uh, for the administrative team to work on. What a, what a community group like that make a, or some sort of task force makes sense for exploring that, uh, that option?
I mean, that, that would be a good idea. You, you have to remember though, when you, you utilize a task, task force, uh, you need to take their recommendations seriously. And if one of those recommendations was to, uh, decrease the stagger time in our school starts, uh, that would require a significant injection of funding in our budget. So I think it's a good idea, but we have to be cautious in terms of, of setting parameters. Uh, I would, I would love to have that money to, to decrease that window, to be hon, I mean, you know I would. But, uh, I also realize we have so many other things that, that we need, like every school district. We're not unique and, and we have to set priorities in terms of what is most important for, for that particular period of time. There are some states and provinces that, that actually have state or provincial regulations in terms of starting times. Some go as late as eight thirty. It's interesting, cause then all of a sudden you, uh, there is no choice when that happens.
Or not much.
But I think, uh, what we could do is, is certainly wait to see what happens with the, uh, scheduling committee. And they're not just talking about starting times, they're looking at other things too in terms of class length. But, uh, we can certainly talk more about that during the summer retreat as well. I think it's a good idea to, to involve the community in, in those discussions. And we're certainly gonna find some information out that, that we don't know.
We already have had one task force recommend that. What we're missing is, as Daryl said, the, the different menu of options. What are the options? What are the pros and cons of each? What are the costs associated with that? Uh, and I know that you had done one breakdown, um, of what, of what it might look like for one particular option. But you have so many, you're running a school district, there's a lot more that you have to think about than the ten different ways that we could make a change or not make a change. Um, so it might make sense to, I'm not sure if there are any students or parents on that scheduling committee that's looking at the, not just the school start time issue, but also, um, the high school, um, blocks, block scheduling, those sorts of options. But maybe including those groups might be a, a useful tool.
Right. Well, I'm sure that, uh, the school improvement committee would also be involved in that, which would have parents on, on it as well. Yeah. And we need to, we need to continue to, to move forward with that. But we also need some timelines too. I, I would hate to, to be talking about the same thing two years from now. It would be nice to have some, you know, definitive direction in terms of can we do something or can't we do something?
Let, let's do this. Let's, uh, obviously it's, it, you know, spontaneously created enough conversation here tonight that, you know, why don't we think about how we put it on the agenda? And we'll keep it on the agenda and we can strategize about what the best, uh, ways of pursuing it are. Whether it's, you know, part of the, uh, the retreat this year and then we'll move right into the fall and keep moving with it or, you know, however else we wanna do it. So I'll, I'll keep talking to Kelly or whoever, after we reorg, we'll figure that out. Um, but we'll keep it moving and keep it on, on the forefront and, uh, figure out what the best way to proceed with it is. Cause it's obviously engendering enough discussion and consideration to, to make it worthwhile.
Sure.
All right.
Perfect.
Uh, Mike Mazzoni has made it. Mike, congratulations. You okay with it? Okay? Good?
Yeah. Apologize for being late. I just, I just left a shredded tire on ninety-five on my way here. So I, it's the second time actually this year that I've had a very important meeting that I blew out a tire on my way to. And it's, I was wearing the same suit actually. The last time I wore it was, I blew out a tire on my way to Holyoke and had to miss that meeting. So lucky I have parents who are willing to come and pick me up on the side of the road. I had to hike down a mountain to meet them, so I'm covered in dirt, but.
Not your driving seat.
All right. So do we want to finish out with the presentation? We still have the middle school to go and then we'll, we'll jump back up to the reorg. Is that all right?
Sounds good.
Yeah?
Yep.
All right.
All right. Principal Brankel, do you have assistance with you this evening or you solo with it?
I told them to relax today.
Try to keep their stress down.
Yes, right.
All right. How's everybody doing? So I just came off the softball.
Not great.
I know you're not. Dust all over me here. So the girls slid into third and I was yelling. Um, so I, even though I don't have assistance, I do, um, want to give the credit where the credit is due. So we had some, a great group of teachers at the, uh, middle school. Um, basically our social, emotional, health and wellness team, uh, they put this report together for us at the middle school. So Zara Dorfman, our adjustment counselor, Tricia Bonacor, our health teacher, Greg Gillette, our physical education teacher, and Kathy McCarthy, our school nurse, um, got together to study this and put together a document, um, that I reviewed with the team. And then we got together after and kind of, uh, put a little more spin on it for tonight's presentation. Um, so same format, um, as in the past couple of years, um, talk about areas of concerns first, and then we'll highlight places where we think we're doing, um, you know, some good work and we, obviously we'll continue to push a little bit. Um, so right out of the gate, under violence-related behaviors, you know, the, uh, been bullied in school over the past twelve months jumps out. Interesting data here. So we, you know, the good news about our staff is we've got a nice mix of veterans who've been there ten, fifteen, twenty something years. And then we've had some, uh, more recent hires with different perspective. And, and what we're hearing from the veterans here is if you look at this piece of data and we looked at the 2012 data, we're hoping then two years later it's similar. Uh, we're actually okay with the sixth grade number being higher than the eighth grade number. Uh, they come into middle school, they're, you know, immature, new, uh, feeling their way around. They get a lot more freedoms, a lot more travel time, uh, technology in their hands in a different way than in the other schools. Um, and then by the time they hit eighth grade, um, there's just like academic stamina and prowess develops in children, so do their ability to control their behaviors from a discipline area, from a, uh, social standpoint within their peer group. Uh, so we do see that that is, that is a trend, that kids come in, that number, um, it's not horribly offensive in the sixth grade, uh, but it's a little up. But then as they get through our middle school, consistently they leave the middle school with a, a large decrease in those kind of behaviors. And a more general understanding, I look at kids who are in my seventh grade, my eighth grade this year, who had lots of behaviors when they're sixth graders. Many, many, many of those kids already are in my office less this year than they were last year. Many of them self-monitor differently and have taken the tools that the teachers and the staff are trying to give them to heart. And they still will slip because they're middle school children, but they slip less. Um, and they don't take it as far as they might have the year before. Um, and that's a positive thing. So that's what we kind of take away from that data. Um, things that we're doing pretty well, uh, obviously the middle school model supports, uh, our ability to, to make adjustments based on kids. Um, for those people that don't know, uh, every single Friday, uh, Ms. Dorfman and I meet with all four teams. So that's a hard lock in the schedule. Everybody knows not to break that up. No meetings are held. So every single Friday, from the first Friday to the last, we go out and we hold meetings with each team. And those are not business meetings. Those are not curriculum discussions. Those are not planning meetings. Those are strictly to talk about children. How are kids doing in the school? What's going on socially, emotionally? Who's struggling academically? Really eyes and ears on the ground coming out of the, the teams and let us know what we need to do with. We really feel like that's allowed us to get a good handle on things so that if, if you looked at, at discipline data, the discipline reviews and this particular type of behavior, discipline referrals rather are way down. Um, because I think a lot of it gets nipped in the bud when good adults kind of catch it early. And then we can do an intervention mediation with children as opposed to waiting for something much worse to happen and then you have to deal with it at a discipline level. Um, so that, that team, team model is very helpful. We have our flex block in the morning, which gives students a home base. They have opportunities to discuss concerns with adults. They have the opportunity to go between adults that they trust. We, we are firm and stand firm in our, our concept that every child has to be able to identify one adult in the school that they trust. We want them to trust everybody. We want them to connect with everybody, but we're realists. So really if, if my daughter in her school has one adult, if somebody said, hey, yeah, if you've got a problem, who's that one go-to person in your building? Every kid needs to be able to name that person. And so we wanna make sure that's happening. And in the, in the instance where we find out that's not happening, then we have to do some work there. Um, and flex block allows opportunities for, for kids and teachers to have a little more relaxed time, um, to really focus on work that needs to be made up, social, emotional things, that kind of stuff. Um, we're in our third year, third year, fourth year, third year of advisory. I'm looking at the staff implementing the better memory of the, the third year of the advisory model, I think. Um, and we have tweaked that program every year. Um, this year, the tweak was that it's, um, embedded in our schedule every single week. Not rotation, not drops. Um, so, um, so we meet every single Monday with our small groups of kids, ten to twelve kids, um, split in boys groups and girls groups. And that came out of the student data. We did student, uh, surveys after our first or second year and they decided that they were more comfortable having high-end conversations about their own behaviors and the things that they were dealing with separately. Um, and we found that fascinating when we took that back to other schools who ran advisory. Um, two schools that I've talked to since that have actually asked their kids and got the same answer. Um, so they're now splitting their programs a little bit similarly to how we're doing it. Um, our health education, uh, I can't say enough about Mrs. Bonacor and the great work she does. She is far, far reaching, um, beyond the four walls of the schoolhouse and beyond the four walls of her classroom. Um, so all of the programs that she puts in place extend out into the regular, um, general population. Behaviors in the hall, these and cafeterias, it goes, you see it in the community, you see it in the community service, you see it in our after school clubs. Um, and, and it's a, it's a really, um, great extension of, of the typical health curriculum that we have going on. So I think kids get a, a heavy dose of, of how to act correctly and what it means to be empathetic and sympathetic, both in the advisory program and in the, uh, health curriculum. Lots of other programs. This is just a quick little list of things we've done recently. We had John Halligan come in, um, and talk to us from Ryan's story. We had Cam Fel Productions come in at the beginning of the year. Ashley Olafson from Move came in and did a fantastic program with eighth grade girls on Mean Girls and what that looks like and shouldn't look like. Um, Best Buddies program is still going strong. Student council is doing great work. We run Mix It Up Day every year. We've had recommendations to try Mix It Up Day once every trimester and see if, that's when you encourage your kids to break the boundaries and break the peer groups and sit at lunch with other kids. at lunch with other kids and really get to know each other differently. Really nice program. And then the Community Service Club, obviously, is very active too. So we've got a lot of social supports for these kids. That third, the last bullet there is important. We need to continue to develop a collective understanding of what bullying behavior is. So I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but as an educator, when the bullying law popped, suddenly, that was everybody's word. And the phones ring in, and kids are using it, and people are saying, my kids getting bullied, or I'm getting bullied, and we need a collective understanding. There is a law, there's an actual definition. There is teasing, and there is kids being mean, and there are people getting picked on, and there is inappropriate behaviors, and there is harassment, and then there is bullying. And so that's a clear definition of repeated behaviors over time and someone being sent a message to stop. And when all of that stuff doesn't occur, we need a good, clear understanding. So when kids take surveys of this, their definition of bullying can be broad, and so what we believe at the middle school is eighth graders actually get it a lot more than sixth graders do, not only the definition of it, but the impact of it. So I think that, again, goes into that number decreasing in eighth grade. Our librarian, Miss Terry Anstis, is hard at work prepping for a new program we want to put into the middle school next year. We are developing a digital citizenship program. I cannot speak to how I'm going to get scheduled and influence into the school, but it's going to happen somehow in September, and she's putting in a digital citizenship program to really address the cyber side of the bullying behaviors, and we need to really embrace the fact that this is the world these kids live in, and we are responsible for teaching them to be responsible digital citizenships, digital citizens. And one of the biggest things I say to kids all the time is that your online profiles and your digital world should be as close to your real-life profile and your real-life world as possible. And if that is not true, you're doing yourself a disservice and you're setting yourself up. I would probably have to give that speech to some adults too, but I think that's a problem in our society right now, that you need to be the same person online that you are in real life. And if that's not true, then you need to clean it up, and that's the message we're sending to our kids. And if we can get them to be responsible citizens when it comes to their tech and their digital side of their life, they're going to be okay as they move forward. Also, we want to continue with our explicit review of our backlash policy when bullying is reported and when kids are identified as causing trouble. Backlash is when you are dealt with as the bully or as someone who has targeted someone, and then there's a discipline or there's some kind of follow-up, and then you step out of line again. You know, you go back out and you say, I can't believe I was in Branko's office because of you, or you just spread that out digitally or personally, inside or outside of school. That has, you know, effects that oftentimes cannot be undone. So we talk about backlash a lot in health curriculum and the advisory programs when it's appropriate, and then, you know, good or bad, it happens coming out of my office when it's supposed to. Similar conversations around stress at the middle school, similar to the high school. Stress levels do continue to rise. Interesting having Mr. Gillette and Mrs. Bonacor in this discussion, because they believe there's a direct correlation between the stress levels rising and physical activity going down. Not sure that this particular survey can quantify that, but I'm okay with qualitative data right now in this particular topic, and I'm okay asking kids about that, and I think that's our next step, is to get kids involved. But I think, you know, anybody that I know who exercises, and you put yourself, family members, or friends into that category, you know, they'll say, oh my God, I gotta get to the gym, I gotta get to the gym, it's been a horrible day. My wife is an avid runner, and I can tell if she skipped two or three days, and I'll just say, man, you leave the house, go for a run, and I'll see you in an hour or so. And I think that that's a real message that we got to get our kids used to, that physical activity. And I'm not saying you got to be a varsity athlete, and I'm not saying you got to run thirty miles. But I think some level of appropriate differentiated physical activity for children is a must. It's not just on the school to put it in place, it's on us as community and parents and educators and together to get this generation of kids to understand that. It absolutely, it has been documented to impact stress in a positive way. And I think if you come into the middle school this year, you'll be fascinated to see kids doing yoga in the hallway, down by the gym, you'll see kids doing meditation this year, lots of nice stuff that's coming out of the health and wellness program, there's Mrs. Bonacor and Mr. Gillette. If you haven't been to the school recently, we moved the wellness room downstairs this year strategically, right outside the gym, mounted a TV in the lobby, and made the lobby a utility teaching space between the gym and the wellness room, and kids are fluidly going between those two rooms for programming. And it's been a really nice move, and you'll see eighth-grade boys doing yoga, and it's fascinating to see them go through that and actually accept and embrace it. So we'll continue to push on that a little bit. Also, just the reality that I think our presenter talked about at the last school committee meeting, that it's really difficult to quantify stress levels. What you consider a stressful thing and I consider a stressful thing, and how each one of us deal with it and how it manifests is totally different and personal and based on your background. And so that's a challenge. You know, when you identify a math issue with a student, you identify it, you can tear it apart, you come up with some good strategies to put in place. When you're talking about stress and social, emotional health issues or concerns, it's much greater than that. So that's hard work to do there. Grade eight, remember, these are kids who were here last year, who are freshman classes this particular year, so that's fifty-eight percent of students talking about high stress as a result of academic workload. That is above the aggregate. And last year, sixth graders, which is our seventh grade group, which is a population of children that we're watching across this particular survey, you'll see that trend coming out of that, that our current seventh graders spike in a lot of these areas, and we know that. We're trying to figure out why to the best of our abilities and then put some action plans in place. But the eighth graders last year were above that aggregate. We've had good conversations at the school about, you know, not tripling kids up on tests. Eighth grade, we've talked a lot that it is most likely academically appropriate for kids to be able to survive, so to speak, two assessments on the same day. They have to be prepared for the reality of high school. Seventh grade, we've talked about, can we get down to one real assessment a day? And sixth grade, they've even been talking, and I hope we'll have this conversation at other grade levels, but sixth grade's even talking about just assigning a day. So Monday is the math teacher's assessment day. And so basically, you have an academic week that goes Monday to Monday, I have an academic week that goes Tuesday to Tuesday, et cetera, et cetera, so that it's not like the schools we grew up in where Friday was the only test day for everybody. And I think we've made really good headway there, quite honestly. I also think the middle school's been progressive in how we assess kids. So our exams aren't always the big, long, daunting fifty-question exam either. We have lots of innovative ways of assessing kids that should theoretically, over time, reduce the stress level to give kids different visuals and different perspectives on how they're assessed. So recommendations under this particular topic, the first one is a great one, I wish I could take credit for it, to interview students to determine how they quantify and define stress. So it's great that they take this survey, but they don't talk to anybody. You know, they take a survey. So we would love to find ways. We did this with our Homework Study Group, if you recall, we got kids involved and we surveyed and did many focus groups, and we got our kids involved when we did our advisory programs, and we had many focus groups after school, I think twice a month when we put that program together. So we've talked about putting focus groups together next year to talk about interviewing students to determine where it's coming from, how they define it, and how it affects them. We'll revisit the findings of the Homework Study Group to see how the homework load is being impacted by the new policy. The feedback anecdotally has been very strong over time, so we'd like to see if that's true or not, and there'll be a parent survey going out very soon, and there are questions about that on that survey as well. Continue with our wellness curriculum, obviously. Continue giving students time during wellness to work on stress management techniques, and I spoke to that. Organizational skills, relaxation, physical activity, mediation, meditation, and communication opportunities within that curriculum. We continue to identify students who are manifesting with high levels of stress that impact them socially, emotionally, or academically at our weekly meetings. We'll take a look at the parent survey. And the last one is really important, you'll see this theme throughout the middle school report. We really want to run with a couple more parent and community programs in the future. I've spoken about that here, about, you know, the frustration of putting programs together and getting low numbers, and, you know, the faculty who want to continue pushing on this simply say, look, then you keep running programs, and the people that attend attend, and they benefit from it. So we'll continue to do that work next year. Stress in young adolescents is probably a place we want to go. We don't want to make it about school stress, we want to make it about all the things in these children's lives that stress them out. School is obviously one of them, but there's a lot. My daughter would tell you her parents are part of that. So, you know, there are lots of people and things in these kids' lives that we need to work on. So the suicide number, seven percent of grade eighth, so you've got to remember percentages here, right? We have a hundred and twenty kids, a hundred and fifteen kids, a hundred and eighteen kids in these classes, so seven percent, you know, if you do that math quickly in your head and figure out how many kids we're really talking about, make sure we have all of that in perspective. So the aggregate is six, this has gone up by two percent, but remember, it's a different group of kids, and so this is totally unpredictable. You can't predict how far a kid's going to take it when they're really down. And so, quite honestly, I've never been prouder or more impressed with a particular school that I've worked at with how they react to that. We have, without going too far to protect confidentiality, we deal, as do many middle schools around our area, we deal with a lot of kids with a lot of social, emotional concerns, and we deal with them well, and we deal with them immediately, and we partner up with parents and local agencies to get that work done. I don't know that that number goes down or up as a result, I think it's one child at a time. That's really the best way to attack that particular bullet there. And again, we continue to educate our children through the health curriculum and through the school programs. The SOS has been a fantastic, that's the size of suicide screening program that we do, that has been fantastic and has really saved many children coming through that program. We've been able to identify and provide supports, and in some instances, really had bad situations off at the pass. We continue to work on our ACT program, which is Acknowledge, Care, Tell. We talk to children all the time about the difference between being a tattletale and taking care of themselves and others. And at the middle school, that is a huge, huge hurdle. Nobody wants to rat anybody out. Nobody wants to get somebody in trouble, but they all want it to stop. And we all talk about the difference between being a tattletale and just talking about something that's really down below here. And this kid needs help, or I need help, that's a different line. And that Acknowledge, Care, Tell is really where they learn that, and that permeates the building, that we all use that language and we all talk to kids about this. We'll continue to do our team meetings, as I said before. We'd like to bring more guest speakers in related to bullying, cyberbullying and suicide, and, you know, Ms. Dorfman will continue to do great work, as she always done individually with students who are at risk. Under the headline of physical activity, you know, when they report that they're only actively engaged three or more times a week as compared to the aggregate, which is seventy-nine percent, that's not necessarily just a school issue again. You know, we've got to look at who plays sports, who doesn't, what family structures are like, what opportunities are available to kids in our community. We are making headway, we're letting kids go outside at lunch, we're buying more picnic tables for the PTA, we're trying to get some easy rec games like bags and boards and that kind of stuff on the grass outside, so that if the kid gobbles down lunch in fifteen minutes, we can say, hey, get out there and be appropriate. It's not a real recess, it's within the confines of the lunchtime, but even right now, we've opened the door for the past two weeks, I mean, they're fighting over picnic tables, and their kids are just sitting on the ground to eat because they just want to breathe the air. You know, forget about running, they just want to see the sun, you know, and so we're going to find ways to get them outside as much as we can. You know, physical education and health are taking a big part of that, obviously. Interscholastic activities after school is a big one. I'm not sure the community understands what a benefit this is. I live two towns down the street, we do not have MIAA interscholastic sports in the town I live in. That is not the norm everywhere. It's the norm in Littleton's league and in their conference, I believe. But it is not the norm in larger conferences around them and other conferences around them. And so my own children are never going to play for their home team colors until they get to freshman year, and that's a nice opportunity for kids in Littleton to take advantage of it. So we want to continue to push on that and make sure kids get those offerings, and try to have as few cuts at the middle school as possible, as long as we can continue to put out good programs that service kids correctly. We'll continue to up our numbers in fitness classes at LMS, Ms. Bonacor is really pushing hard on that. The dietary behavior, interesting one here, again, concern with our current seventh grade, not eating breakfast compared to the aggregate, that's a really high number. And so we had a conversation of how we're going to roll this out, instead of just throwing the survey results up on our website, we really feel like the school needs to reach out to the parents of that particular group and just let them know what this number means and let them know, hey, you have to know your kids in this particular group. Maybe your kid is eating, but generally, this is what we're hearing. The Wellness Committee is working with the Food Service Director, Mr. Overcash, he and I have met quite, probably three or four times already since January to talk about piloting the National School Breakfast Program next year, and that is something we really would like to try. Again, logistically, it'll be an interesting shift in our morning, and I'll work on that, you know, between now and August with the leadership team to figure out how best to make that happen, but we think that that's a worthwhile opportunity for kids. And strangely enough, there's anecdotal and real data around breakfast programs and attendance and kids coming to school on time. And I find it fascinating, again, without disclosing anything major, that my frequent tardy students all show up on the day that we have MCAS breakfast. And I'm sure they're not running through the doors for MCAS. So it's because they want the bagel and the juice, and they want to socialize for a few minutes in the morning. No different than you running to your office early because you know someone else is buying the coffee. So it's fascinating, and so I'd like to give it a try and just see if it works. So we're going to push hard on that. Other recommendations around the dietary behaviors, start the school year hard with more educational programming. So Ms. Bonacor is looking at her pacing guides and her curriculum maps to try to figure out, should she strategically drop certain units into the start of the school year so that kids develop better habits, as opposed to the current order for her curriculum, and she's doing that work right now. So areas of continued success, illegal drug use over time, especially the marijuana question, you know, this number is so low, five percent, zero percent. Really proud of that number. We want to continue to push hard on our health education program related to substance abuse, continue to participate in the Red Ribbon Week, which is the anti-drug campaign. Consider bringing in guest speakers related to substance abuse and having school-wide assemblies on that work. And then we have always had a great relationship with the Littleton Police Department and the SROs, who have been really good resources to come in and talk one-on-one or in small groups of kids anytime anything's percolating around this particular topic. But that number, I'm proud to say, Littleton Middle School is almost nonexistent at this point in time. Tobacco use, also another one that's just way down there, you know, these kids didn't grow up with the commercials and people walking around with cigarettes all in front of them in a similar manner that some of us did, and so I think society has had a great impact on that, and I think schools deserve to take some of that credit as well. However, now we're going to be looking at, if you look at the recommendations, you know, most of them are pretty easy to understand. That last one, we need to begin to review the impact that e-cigarettes and the vaping trends have. It is, I heard Mr. Fontenelle ask this, or I think, or sorry, Mr. Baker asked it, what's going on at the high school. We don't, we're not seeing trends spike, but we're at least enough in the know to know that it is a hip thing and it's easier access sometimes, and you don't have to go out and buy another pack and another pack and another pack. And the reality of this type of product is it's not just about tobacco. You can almost vape anything. And so that's the part of the education that we have to do with this stuff, is that we don't want them marketed or kids being tricked into hearing, this is a safe alternative, or it's a cool way to look like a smoker and it'll never hurt you, because they could be horribly detrimental to you if you don't know what's in the liquid you're vaping. And so there's enough information out there on that that we need to kind of roll that into the curriculum a little heavier next year as we move forward. But it's really not, you know, something that we're physically seeing around us at this time. HIV and AIDS education, families are talking about it. Again, that's a societal shift that, you know, I think the schools can take some part in acknowledging that they were part of, but I think a lot of that has to do with how we've evolved as a society, and we will continue to talk about all communicable diseases within our health curriculum program. And then sexual behavior, grade eight going down by one percent. Again, remember how many kids we have in every grade and how small that percentage number is.[1696.12] And then recommendations would be, again, to continue with our health curriculum in this area and the human sexuality component of the curriculum. Encourage students to continue speaking with guardians about sensitive topics like sexual activity and safe sex. Not easy topics to stand in front of you and even let flow off my tongue, let alone talk to children about. So you have to do it. It's our obligation as the adults to get that done. And maybe, you know, as I say, it's not easy to do, maybe parent programs supporting how to talk to kids about sexual behaviors and what is happening right now and what kids are talking about. And again, if we partner up with parents in that way and do two or three or four good pushes with parent support opportunities and programs next year in two or three major areas, I think that would be a nice win for us. That's everything I have.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I generally agree pretty much with everything that you covered in there, except that I'm going to push back a little bit on the, when you're talking about the bullying. I understand the technical definition. I'm one to understand the technical definitions of many things there. But the way you presented it, I don't want to imply that there's a less concern about increased amount of teasing, increased amount of these other activities that over the long term constitute bullying there. You know, because it boils down to, we need to be looking at reducing the amount of inappropriate behaviors that are occurring at school. And just the way you presented it, that didn't come across.
So let me, yeah, let me hit two points. Number one, I look at survey data like this the same way that I look at growth data with MCAS. So you're comparing apples and oranges. You're comparing a different group of children. So two years ago was a different group of children. So when it's up in the aggregate, or if it's up compared to the past sixth graders, the up isn't what's concerning to me. The percentage of kids is more concerning to me out of our small group. And you're right, it's not about the definition of bullying. It's about our kids being appropriate to each other and being good citizens within the four walls of the schoolhouse. And if that's your concern, that I didn't sell it that way, then I'll resell it because that is obviously a major focus of ours. We use progressive discipline at the middle school too, right? Parents have heard me say this for five years. I make no bones about the fact that kids are going to make mistakes, right? They're going to make mistakes. They need to learn from their mistakes. So we try to attack that one child at a time. We try to make sure that they learn from their mistakes. They get appropriate consequences if they need them. And we've been doing a lot of mediation this year. And maybe it's because it happens to be a bubble population. I suppose we could connect that data too if you wanted to. But we're doing a lot of mediation at the middle school. And that is a healthy skill to teach children. Because if we could all do that on our own without the help of others, man, you know, we wouldn't have anybody getting picked on with adults or kids. So, you know, we do, Darryl, go after that pretty hard.
And I just, the way you use your terms, I didn't want to come across that we would tolerate teasing.
Yeah, absolutely not. Yeah, thank you.
Unchecked teasing or whatever.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I had the same thought that Darryl was talking about. I know, I don't think any of us got the impression from you that you were in any way condoning it. But I did get the same kind of vibe that it was, there was more to it. But that led to a question I had, which is, in the question about bullying, did it break out, having not seen the actual question, does it, did it break out what kind of bullying? Was it in-person, cyberbullying? And did it ask, were there questions about those lower iterations of inappropriate behavior other than just bullying?
I don't think it differentiated it down in behaviors, but there was cyber and face-to-face. Yeah, there was cyber and face-to-face.
And are those numbers combined in this?
Yeah, I believe they are.
Do you have a sense of which?
Well, the reality is, and I believe I can say this firmly and factually, almost all of the cyberbullying stuff happens outside of school.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, that wouldn't surprise me.
So we kind of, we differentiate how we address the stuff too. So if it's behaviors within the schoolhouse, that's got to be addressed same day. When the information is gathered, you've got to end it. When it's outside of the school and then it trickles in and it impacts the kids socially, emotionally, or academically at school, then that's a larger conversation. So off the top of my head, I don't know which number was higher, to be quite honest with you.
I imagine that obviously the trend is probably going in the direction of becoming more cyber.
It is. You know, anecdotally it is. And we talk with children all the time about that. And when we look at kids' profiles and when someone comes to me with an accusation and you start scrolling through, it's horrible in some cases. We all get screen muscles. And it's easy to act that way when you don't have to look someone in the eye.
Right, you've talked about this before, and I appreciate it, which is talking about, you know, acting the same way as you would on the internet, as you do in person. And I wonder if that translates, if people actually process that, the text messages that they just sent or the posts that they just sent actually has that kind of impact.
And, you know, on the rare occasion that when I take a look at it and I see that, you know, it's a picture of two people in a bathroom and then they go after someone frivolously, well, that's, now we get two issues to cross. You know, you're breaking the tech policy in the school and you're going to have to get so.
And now how about the lesser included offenses, I would call them? Do we measure other things? I imagine, do we ask people about whether they've ever been teased versus being bullied?
Right, we don't in the survey, but I mean, we do at school. So there's a referral process at the middle school that includes warnings. So we've tightened that up in my time here. So what that means is even if a teacher just speaks to a kid and doesn't give that, like if Ms. Morgan gives a kid a lunch detention and she says, I want to handle this in my classroom, the green slip gets filled out, they circle teacher action, lunch detention, so I know that that happens. So when you use progressive discipline, most students, I'm proud to say, you know, they will react the first time. You know, if you go drive by one cop and get pulled over, you know, hopefully a day later when you're still thinking about that, you would hope. So maybe that's a bad analogy, but I'm stretching there. But, you know, we try to use that. So I have, you know, we have files, everything's stored. I can tell you, you know, how many kids were down for a first offense and never came back. I can tell you how many kids have been back down there 10 times. I can tell you how many kids had to ramp up with the real, with, you know, hardcore consequence versus the written warning and the parent's signature. The progressive discipline model works. Most children respond to that first or second time.
I don't think that Ms. Morgan would give me detention. But the question, well, because I guess part of my question was that, I can imagine, I cannot emphasize enough how much, I'm not an expert in this field at all, but I imagine even picturing myself back then, that I would be more reluctant to say that I've been bullied versus saying, of course, I've been teased and picked on. And I don't, I think, like reflecting on what Darryl said, I don't think that's any loss of a problem. So I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, it's not. And, yeah, so, you know, no tolerance for that kind of behavior. So no tolerance doesn't mean throwing the book at a kid. No tolerance is an educational process, you know?
I totally agree with that too, especially at that age, you don't realize, I was one of those kids. You don't realize that what you've just said, what it actually means, or what you, you meant it as a joke, but they took it as something different. All right, I'll try not to ask all these questions because they're probably not all. Another one, again, I'm not an expert in this at all, but I imagine that stress probably influences a lot of these other things.
Oh, yeah.
Like bullying, I think, I feel like I've heard anecdotally that stress affects all these things, dietary thing, emotional behavior, stuff like that. So is there, it seems like you guys have put an emphasis on this, but I guess my question is, the report says that it was related to, as a result of academic workload? Is that the only question that addresses stress?
I believe unfortunately, yes.
Now what?
I mean, I'll go back and check. Please don't quote me on that, but you don't have the survey in front of me, but I think the answer is yes.
In the high school version, I remember it broke it down, but I think in the report that they showed us at the last meeting.
They just call it stress.
Well, in the report, in the last meeting, they pulled out the more pertinent questions. So I think they had, I know in the high school, when I think in the middle school, when they had academic, friends slash social, and then a home, family, those, I think those were the three categories. I know they did that for the high school. I'm pretty sure they did it for the middle school. But they only pulled out the things that were really striking. Yeah, so, yeah, that might.
Yeah, and honestly, at the middle, I can't speak for high school, but at the level of a young adolescent, it's all this, it's all one big ball of stress. You know, if you have, if you have a middle schooler, man, you know what I'm talking about. It's all one big ball of stress.
Well, that's why I was wondering why they would hone in on just that one question versus just asking stress altogether.
Well, I think respectfully, the team at the middle school also understands what we can and can't control. And so if we have a pocket of kids who claim that they have academic stress, that is actually our problem in totality there. I mean, we'll share it with the parents, but we own that. Which is why we looked at the homework policy a couple of years ago, and now we can look at our testing policies, et cetera.
And then one, just one last question. What is national breakfast? What national school breakfast?
It's just the actual name of the program we're looking at. So it's a breakfast program, similar to your lunch program where the kids can use their PIN cards and they can, and kids who aren't free and reduced get the same, you know, benefits that they do from the lunch program. So really, it would be an opportunity for kids to come in right off the bus, get into the cafeteria, grab something quick to eat.
Built into the schedule, the day? Or is it added on?
Well, no, it'll probably both, actually.
You're trying to blend it.
Yeah, I'm looking at a hybrid between a little earlier, opening the doors a little earlier and still getting them to that first period on time.
Because I totally agree with that. Again, I have no data to back me up, but I definitely agree with you with the idea of like easing your way into the school day. And instead of starting in the classroom, start starting and having a banana and a bagel or something like that.
If you can cut me down to one meal prep at home, oh, Dad.
But it's not, it's not a thing like they did in Boston.
It's not like a city free program, no.
I know my kids would be happy if I was only making one meal a day.
I'll help you out.
Okay, cool, thanks.
I've already made my, there's no such thing as free lunch stroke today, so I won't make it here. On that, on that subject, what's MCAS breakfast?
Oh, so that's something that we do as a school just to really ensure that kids are well-fed and ready for that. So the cafeteria staff puts together a little à la carte, bagels and orange juice, and it changes sometimes yogurt and something else. So every morning that a kid has an MCAS test, they come in. Out of flex block in the morning after attendance is taken, they come down to 20, 25 minutes, have a little breakfast and social time, get the bugs out, get their bellies full. I usually do something silly to kind of loosen them up and try to get them engaged and focused on the test at the same time. And then they go up.
And we provide that. And of course, you want, we want to do that because if our kids are, have eaten, they're not going to be hungry. They're going to have more energy. They're going to be able to think better.
And honestly, that MCAS breakfast has helped John and I figure out whether this could be impactful. So we watch how many kids eat, how many kids don't eat. We've been doing that, I think, the MCAS breakfast since I got here. And so, you know, you can get some good numbers as you walk around. And if you go see 120 kids in the sixth grade and you see like only five or six of them didn't take something. You know, let's talk about early start time, right? My school, my daughter's school is an hour, hour and a half later than ours in Littleton. So I don't know how you get a kid out of the house and sitting in a bus stop at 6:30 and well-fed. And if they have a daughter, prep for being a daughter. So, you know, I don't know how all that happens in all of your houses, quite honestly. So I know in my house, it's organized chaos at best. So, you know, to get, to walk out, maybe they got breakfast and they ate it quickly. Or they was throwing at them, going out the door. Or maybe they're growing, as many of our kids are, and they are starving again in an hour. Right? I mean, I've got, we get kids who buy three lunches every day.
I was going to say, you know, we want to do it. We'd like to provide our kids with the ability to go to school, fed, energized, ready, every day, not just when there's a test. Because if we do that, I think we'd see that, you know, if we're looking just at test scores right now, we'd see that our test scores increase even if we offer them breakfast every day except test day. Because they're going to be able to learn throughout the rest of the school year where they're actually learning rather than testing will do better. So that was, when I heard about MCAS breakfast, I was kind of like, hmm, it kind of struck me the wrong way. But I see where you're coming from, and I really like the idea of a national school breakfast program. Do you know what the fiscal implications of that would be? Or if we'd, I know it's probably in the early stages. I know that USDOA provides some support in that. And John Overcash isn't here to.
Yeah, I don't want to answer too quickly.
I don't think we'd really have to look into, yeah, I'm not sure how much more it would be. I mean, the reimbursement is fairly close to the cost of the meal. And we're looking at low-level breakfast. We're not going to be cooking bacon and eggs every day. So we'll have to look into that. I really am a proponent of having breakfast programs. I think they do truly make a difference.
Excellent. Thank you. I also had a question about the bullying. And we are, my colleagues have already said about it, and I can't about bullying versus the teasing. Versus the main, whatever we, whatever they want to call it. And so that might be one reason why the eighth grade number might be higher than the sixth grade numbers, because the students might, as you said, have a better grasp of what that is. What concerns me is that it's still an increase, sixth grade. If you look at sixth grade to sixth grade over the years, it is still high. And if you look at sixth grade to sixth grade versus the aggregate, just taking the Y of the S report, it's still about 20, 30% higher percent of our sixth graders who reported and concluded versus the aggregate.
Right. So I haven't done the math, but if you have a sixth grader of 400 kids versus a sixth grader of 120, it might actually be the same amount of kids too. So I mean, I'm not respectfully getting bogged down in the numbers as much as I'm getting bogged down in what Darryl was calling me out on. You know, stopping the behaviors and reteaching kids. You know, those numbers have been pretty consistent coming in sixth grade as far as, you know, 16, 18, 20% in there. And so I don't know that we're going to do any drastic work that knocks that number down coming from fifth to sixth. That is a huge transition year if you've got kids who've done that. That's a huge transition year for kids. And they manifest differently than, you know, oftentimes I hear from fifth grade teachers, wow, he wasn't like that in fifth grade. Or, you know, you know, or you hear the opposite sometimes. But a lot of times, it's a tough transition year for kids and they have to learn to navigate the middle school. I also sometimes offend people by accident when I talk about normed adolescent behaviors. Teasing kids is a normed adolescent behavior. They should grow out of it and learn not to do it and be dealt with when it's inappropriate. But you shouldn't be surprised by it or really, we, those of us in the business don't get as heightened by it. We get heightened when we can't change the behavior. That's what bothers us. When we, when we work with a child and we can't stop the behavior, that's when our flags go.
I guess, so I guess the difference is being surprised versus being concerned. We're going to be concerned about it. We are worried about it. We are doing everything in our power to change it.
Not surprised.
But we're not at all surprised. It's a middle school, right? We have some limitations on that. In terms of the stress being linked to academics, have we seen a decrease since the homework policy has come into effect?
Well, so we've heard from parents anecdotally that they're happy that they see time at home going down or they see the efforts like, you know, for example, I got emails early on that said, you know, I can see less math problems coming home than in past years. Or flipped classroom takes care of some of that where kids are doing the work differently. And they have an opportunity to pace it in their own way. So I don't have a lot of hard data on that. The parent survey goes out this week or next week. And when that goes out, that'll be interesting to collect that data. And again, we're going to, as I said earlier, we're going to put focus groups of students together to talk about stress. What it is, what it feels like, what causes it, because the survey doesn't give us those answers.
And that's exactly what we should be doing. Because I do remember that, and again, I'm not sure if this was for the high school data or for the middle school data, but that the family stress factors were lower or equal to the aggregate. And I think the social friendship ones were as well. And it was only the academic stress factors which were concerning. And that's, I think, again, as you said, why we took the step of moving to the homework policy in the first place. And of course, it's difficult because most of your parents aren't going to have had a student in your school two years ago and then a student in your school now. So they won't.
It is a small number of people who I can compare that data.
And the students, of course, have only hopefully gone through, you know, their school years. And so they also won't be able to compare. But maybe because you've been here for a while and some of the, some of the teaching staff who have been here for a while, are we seeing a change over time in how our students are feeling stress-wise? Because it still appears to be trending upwards, which is true, you know, across the aggregate as well. But ours are still significantly higher than that aggregate.
I think the question we can't answer right now is why are we above the aggregate? So if you look at the names of the communities that make that up, it could be surprising to people to know that ours is higher than certain profiles of communities around us who took the same exact survey.
It was to me, because I, yeah.
I'm not looking for the answer tonight, but I have, I have asked myself why, why the children in Littleton manifest or report this more than children in town A, B, and C around us? And if you name those towns, that's a fascinating question that we should poke at a little bit.
Are you talking about the bullying?
Stress, stress. Yeah, stress. That question is one that I would love to dig into somehow. I don't know how, what the energy level is for me to do it, but I, that's a real question.
And I think you're right, there's no clear answer. And I'm not, I swear, I'm not trying to stump you.
No, no, it's okay.
Do you know why the physical activity might be trending, might be down?
I mean, I think it's down everywhere in the, I can't speak internationally, but it's everywhere in the country. I mean, I go into my neighborhood and I got to pay kids to go out and throw a ball with my son. You know, it's, it's, it's down everywhere. My mother used to go out in the street and just have to scream our names at seven o'clock at night because the sun was going down.
And I think you hit the nail on the head. The opportunity for physical activity in Littleton is fantastic. We are not shortchanging our children in terms of opportunity.
You're rebuilding Castle and the Clouds. We're doing so much in this community. I'm sorry? So I drive by it every day. I should know it's in the trees, not in the clouds. I think I'm in the clouds.
That was a movie, an animation movie. It's very good.
Oh, Les Mis, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, I think the opportunity is there. And what we can do as a school to keep reminding them why it's beneficial to take advantage of it is to, is our, is our purpose. But I think we should all feel very comfortable that the opportunities are there.
So this, this team wanted to draw correlations between technology and physical activity. You know, we're conservative in drawing those connections, but some people aren't and some people believe it wholeheartedly that that's real.
Halo's not a sport.
Huh?
Halo's not a sport.
Halo's not a sport. Minecraft is not, Minecraft is not, well, some kids, it's a physical activity if you watch it play it. But yeah, I mean, and there's a balance, which trying to teach our kids what we were supposed to learn, and there's a balance in everything you do. Physical activity is wonderful.
And then you had thought of the idea of having more after-school EE programs?
Well, we have an intramural program. You know, the blessing and the curse at the middle school is we have so many programs in only five days a week and really only three of them with late buses. So we have 15 to 20 after-school programs. But, you know, one kid can only really do three because that's the three days. So they pick and choose. They really want to do engineering and this. And wow, intramurals looks cool, but they might give up on that one because they know, they think they can go run around the yard later and they can't get an engineering club later. So I think families and kids make choices. You know, it's not for, it's not for lack of offerings.
Is your recommendation, just, or the team's recommendation, just to offer more specific fitness classes?
Yeah, and we're also wondering, like recreational backyard games is, it levels the playing field. Everybody can go to Uncle Joe's house and play bags and boards, you know, and play horseshoes and whatever, you know. Can Jam is a great one. Can Jam. Google Can Jam. It's a great game. So, right, that's not an athletic prowess thing. That's not a, I don't want to go out and get struck out of wiffle ball thing. So we're exploring those other.
Better, more inclusive.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All I would say is you clearly hit the points where none of these behaviors, especially at the middle school because it is a big transition, surprised you guys, you're being proactive, you have your programs in place and really it's just a matter of emphasis and focus rather than it's on.
Lack of it.
Exactly, correct. So thank you very much for that, Dr. Branko. All right, let's go ahead and quickly go through the reorganization. Hopefully this will take a few minutes and then we can move forward with the curriculum reports. In order to do this, do we need a motion to dissolve the current?
No.
Okay.
No, at this point in time, as superintendent, I ask for nominations for chair. So I'll take any nominations at this time.
I'd like to nominate Mike Fontenella for chairman.
Any other nominations? If I could have a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to nominate Mike Fontenella for chairman of the school committee?
All in favor?
I need a second.
Oh, second, sorry. Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Yes, congratulations.
Thanks, I guess.
And I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Then we need nominations for vice chair.
I make a motion to nominate, do I make a motion or do I nominate?
Nominate first.
I nominate Mike Mazzoni for vice chair.
All right, are there any other nominations? Can I make nominate? I can make nominations, right?
You can do it.
I'm going to nominate Daryl Baker. All right, are there any other nominations? All right.
So you would ask for a motion at this point?
All right, we'll see if we get a second and then we'll go from there. All right, need a motion?
I make a motion to elect Mike Mazzoni as vice chair.
Are there any seconds? All right, hearing none, I will make a motion that we elect Daryl Baker as vice chairman?
Second.
Most of them need a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a vice chair. Now I need secretary.
Make a motion to nominate Alex Pratt for secretary?
Are there any other nominations? Actually, it's not a motion, it's just a nomination.
Nomination.
Are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
Like to nominate Alex Pratt for secretary, second.
Make a motion and seconded, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent. The next thing that we would typically do would be the subcommittee appointments. I would like to ask that we defer that and just kind of leave them as they are and any that Chuck was dealing with will deal on an ad hoc basis. We're getting near the end of the of our regular meeting schedule. We kind of take a little hiatus through July and even August, we really just do the retreat. And I'd like to wait until we get a fifth member appointed so that we can share the workload and get them legitimately involved where they would like to be and where their strengths lie and not have to do it twice. Does anybody have any objection to that in comments?
I think that makes sense. Is there is there a way we can have a, I don't know if we need a motion, but make it clear that those the current subcommittees are still, those will not necessarily in an ad hoc basis, but they're.
Really, the only thing ad hoc that would be anything that Chuck was doing. Yeah, the ones that we have, we'll we'll keep taking care of them.
None of our subcommittee appointments are have termination dates anyways, only until we dissolve them and reappoint them.
So we'll just deal with, you know, whatever Chuck was doing on an ad hoc basis where we, and like I say, hopefully that will be minimal. Not that I don't want us to be busy and involved, but it's just a natural transition into a slower time of year, so I think we're okay and we'll just do it the one time after we get the fifth member whenever that transpires. And to that effect, what we need to do for that is that is a joint appointment with us, the board of selectmen and the town moderator. So we need to get with them to have a discussion about process timelines and such. I did have a brief conversation with Jimmy Carr, who was elected as the new chair of the of the current board of selectmen. Their next meeting is not until June eighth due to Memorial Day and he's going to get us on there so we can go over there with them and sit down with them and talk about the process. Having said that, I don't feel there's any thing precluding us from posting the opportunity and I can double check with him and make sure his board is okay with that and if it is, then we'll go ahead and and post that through the town offices. And then that way, anybody that's interested will know and we'll get it out there and people can start thinking about whether or not they want to participate. And then, again, when we meet with the board of selectmen, we can actually figure out the actual timelines and what works.
And that may take several days because we haven't actually received Chuck's.
That's true too. We actually, we haven't had official notification of that yet either, right? So we kind of got it right. We got to go through the process. He's got to resign and then then we can post, right?
We're, are we being a little presumptive here?
He's going to resign? I don't think so.
It'll be a hold on, I'm sure. I thought he had indicated.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think he's, yeah, he's going to, it's going to happen. I think you're right, it's just a question of getting getting through the process. So we'll we'll keep that moving forward, but it's not going to happen with just us. It's a joint thing and there it's minimally, it'll have to be posted for thirty days, so it's going to be a little while before we get this resolved. But again, we're coming into a kind of a natural transition where we're going to slow down a little bit, so I don't think it's going to be anything that's going to cause us any issues or problems, so.
I I did check the selectmen's meetings for June and July and the next one that would be after that thirty days would be the twenty second?
Of June.
Of June.
If we post when on?
If we post by the twenty second of the month.
Which is.
Which which is.
Okay, we're going to.
More than a week away.
Yeah, okay.
So I think that's plenty of time.
Okay.
And that way, we are not going to our summer retreat so that we don't have a new member who comes in missing that.
Okay, we'll see what they think about that and we'll go from there, okay? All right, we good on all that? All right, thank you for your patience. State of curriculum reports.
This year, we've divided them up into two sections and glad we did. Eight thirty-five at night already and we just felt that it would be much, much better to have half of them done and then and then you're not absorbing too much information at once.
That would work well.
So at this point in time, again, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Jamien to introduce tonight's presenters.
Appreciate it. This is always a very informative, uplifting meeting, one that shows how proud we are of the practices and the professionalism of our staff. I want to start by introducing some of the curriculum coordinators who will be presenting and say a little bit about the process tonight. As Superintendent Clinchy indicated, we're dividing the presentations into two to be presented over two meetings. And besides splitting them into two sessions, we're having the curriculum coordinators, like years past, focus on the major accomplishments and planned initiatives within their department, but at basically the school committee's request. It came out in our retreats, in our meetings, that the school committee would wanted to hear a little bit more of an emphasis on professional development activity, specifically professional development that's taken place within the venue, the early release times, to hear a little bit more of that and to flesh that out more in their presentations. And that's what our presenters are going to do. You will hear them talk about different pathways for professional development, pathways that the district allows within the strategic plan, and you'll hear about graduate coursework as well as conferences that members of their department are have attended and bringing practices back. And one of the focus points of of those conferences or one key theme within those conferences is the conferences held by professional organizations. And this is a very, very important recurring recurring aspect or pattern within the professional development that our faculty pursues. Finally, I want to introduce to you some of the faces that or speak about some of the faces that you will see here tonight. The superintendent indicated that there's an awards assembly going on at the high school. Dr. Finity is wearing her parent hat tonight and attending that ceremony. So Dr. Branko and I will be speaking in general about the bullet points that Dr. Finity provided. Mrs. Bridge will be beginning the presentations. She is the art and music coordinator. She has K-12 next to her name. Some of the curriculum coordinators are curriculum coordinators for the secondary grades, six to twelve. Mrs. Bridge covers grades K to twelve. In fact, she holds the distinction of teaching at three out of the four schools every day. So she is clearly qualified to bring together.
Wonder Woman.
Bring together a K to twelve perspective. Someone that you may know but not know in this role is Mr. Pascucci, who is in his first year as the English Language Arts Coordinator for grades six to twelve. And he has been doing double duty, so to speak, during the professional development early release time. And will talk to you in detail and is able to talk to you in detail about the early release professional development at the middle school and the ELA curriculum review process that's being undertaken, as well as some of the reconfigurations of the core structures at the high school and the DDM work that's being done during early release time. And Mrs. Morgan will be presenting again in history and social science, bringing many of these same themes to the forefront. And Dr. Branko and I will do our best to set forth important talking points that Dr. Finerty. In terms of a process, we'll do what we have done in years past. Each of the curriculum coordinators will come up in turn, present for five to ten minutes and then take questions on theirs on their subject area and then they'll introduce the the next speaker. So I thank you very much. Mrs. Bridge?
Good evening. There we go, all right. Okay. So we'll just begin, I thought the most logical way to set this up was just to start at the bottom and work our way up. So we'll begin with elementary music. In elementary music, the focus is for students to become beatful, artful, and tuneful. So the goal is to help them find ways to incorporate music in their lives for the rest of their lives and an effort's made for students to balance the high-tech education that kids are getting these days with some low-tech activities, so using voices, hands, feet, eyes, and ears. Some highlights from this year include learning about theme and variations with the ballet The Red Poppy, a fifth grade unit called Mallet Madness, where students learn to use glaucon spiels and metallophones and xylophones. They learn to play the recorder in fourth grade. There was a Veterans Day performance by the third grade. The second grade learned about the Purgant Suite and a first grade musical performance called Bugs. In visual art, students at Shaker Lane and at Russell Street explored using a variety of media, including but not limited to painting, drawing, sculpture, clay, and color. This year, color theory was a major area of focus across all the grade levels and throughout the year. So the areas of improvement were determined through the DDM process. So it was actually kind of a fascinating study of color from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. The art teachers got together and designed a DDM, a joint DDM on color, which was great. There was a cross-grade sampling of student work was showcased for a month-long exhibit at the Ruben Hoare Library. And some other highlights include a fourth grade visit to the Decordiva Sculpture Park in Lincoln and a fifth grade trip to Boston to visit the ICA, the Institute of Contemporary Art. And they'll participate in an architectural tour and an art lab experience. And so wrapping up the year, the Russell Street Art Show was tonight and Shaker Lane's Art Show is on June third. So we can head forward to the middle school. So the middle school general music curriculum is aligned so that both teachers are now covering the same units at approximately the same pacing. So that means that all middle school students should be getting a similar musical experience. Much of the building-based PD time has been used to develop the curriculum and align with each other. So the in in some attendance, I personally intended the Massachusetts Music Educators Conference this year in March and much of the focus of the conference this year and last year was DDMs. So there was a lot of really good conversation happening about how to create authentic DDM experience in a performing or visual art world. Chorus and drama enrollment is pretty steady with a hundred students enrolled in chorus at the middle school and sixty students who participated in their two productions this year, The Pied Piper and The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe. Chorus performed at the Veterans Day Ceremony as well as our yearly concerts and we had one eighth grader, Katie Stratton, who was selected to perform with the MMEA Junior District Chorus. Band enrollment is still growing with thirty-three in the current seventh grade and forty-two in the current sixth grade and the projected numbers for the current fifth grade is fifty-six. So in addition to our two yearly concerts, we have continued the new tradition that we started this year of the, well, last year and this year, the townwide band concert in February where we had all two hundred and twelve band students performing together in the finale. The middle school band and chorus concert hasn't happened yet, but it is on June ninth, which also coincides with the visual art show. So June ninth, the high school, seven o'clock, come see us. Middle school art has seen lots of changes with the introduction of new technology, particularly Google Classroom, Blogger, and some animated GIFs. So Erin Updegrove has spent a great deal of time creating some awesome resources on art concepts and materials and her it's all can be found at her student website, which I really should have posted up here, but I didn't, so I apologize for that. But it's art@LMS, all one word, dot blogspot.com. And if you go to that website, you can see her her GIFs and her video demonstrations. In addition to the yearly Mass Art Educators Conference, Erin also intends some monthly meetings with art educators from the Metro West area and they kind of discuss ways that they're integrating technology and different classroom management techniques, some successful projects and sharing sort of sessions. And she also co-led a professional development session this year on Google Forms with Todd Shoemaker and she led a professional development session on Google Classroom. So that's the middle school. And then when we get to the high school. The chorus numbers are small but still growing. This year, in addition to their concerts, they also gave performances at the Council and Aging Luncheon and at St. Anne's Sodality. Two ninth graders, Anson Staples and Phaedra Farini, were selected to sing with the MMEA Junior District Chorus. This is also the second year we've been able to go offer beginning guitar at the high school and we continue to have pretty steady enrollment with the class. Band has grown to fifty-five members, will be over sixty for next year. In addition to our already quite full fall performance schedule, this year we were also had the privilege of performing at the three-hundredth anniversary parade in September. And my very dedicated students showed up for two weeks in August to prepare for that, so I got to give them the plug for that. We also played holiday music at the local bazaar and we recorded a short TV blurb for LCTV of Christmas carols that aired around the Christmas season. Additionally, this year, for the first time in anybody's recent memory, the high school band traveled to the Micah Festival in Lexington in March. And another exciting thing that's kind of happening currently, through some grants, the Indian Health Faculty has been coming to work with the middle school and high school students in small groups to help enhance some technique. And we still have, the high school still has performances left at the annual Memorial Day Parade and of course, at our LHS graduation ceremony. In photography and graphic arts, we've been able to add some new DSLR cameras to the photography classes, still looking to add some more. The graphics and photography students also worked with the English Department this year to compile fantastic content for the Periscope Literary, yeah, sorry, I lost my place, literary magazine, which will now be online. And as for the coming school year, we have the exciting addition of a new 3D computer animation course. They'll be using Maya 3D, which is a very advanced software program to create computer animation. So we're continuing on with our Twenty First Century Learning Standards in the field of art and design. In visual art, Emily Malone won a national silver medal for her art portfolio and Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. This year, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards received more than three hundred thousand submissions and less than one percent received national recognition. She's the third LHS student in five years to win an award in the national competition and the first, to anyone's knowledge, to be recognized for her portfolio. The art portfolio competition is only open to seniors and Emily was among three portfolio winners from Massachusetts to receive national honors. We also had a number of winners in the state competition. We also had a number of winners in the state competition. Emily also won a gold key for her portfolio and a gold key in digital art, which advanced her to the national competition. And she also received honorable mentions in the drawing and illustration and comic art categories. Corinne Loesch won a silver key for her art portfolio, and Samantha Yates received a silver key in ceramic and glass. Adam Canfield won a silver key in design, and Brian Cahill received an honorable mention in digital art. In addition to the Scholastic Art Competition, students have had a number of opportunities to share their art with the community. In March, there was a small exhibition of LHS student work at the Ruben Hore Library, and at the high school art show was this past week. So for the second year, ceramic students created GIFs for the Council on Aging Luncheon. And for the third year, high school students designed a logo for Finley's Fighters 5K. And this year, senior Julia Court won the winning submission. And that's us.
Questions or comments, Alex?
Every year, I'm impressed by how much you're able to do with
Thank you.
the resources you have. Every year. And every year, it seems that we're adding new stuff. I'm still impressed with Disney.
Thank you. We're going back, yes. We are going back February of 2016. So next, this upcoming school year, yes.
Excellent. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
And of course, the 300th Parade, the students coming in during the middle of the summer, during the end of the summer, because the summer is short, to essentially go to band camp.
They probably had a lot more fun than I did.
Yeah. I bet you must be exhausted. Rebuildings every day, doing this, coordinating. And I hear you have kids.
I do, I do, yes.
So it must be a lot. But I'm always impressed.
Thank you.
Not just with music, but also the art, the digital art, so many different things. It's always tough, I think, when there are so many different pressures coming in from outside the district to prioritize the very limited resources we have. But what is clear is that the resources that you do have to use very exceptionally, not just in music but in digital art and in finance as well. So, great job.
Thank you.
We've got no questions, unless, can we figure out any ways to fill the rest of your free time?
What is this phrase? You call free time?
No, I've got no questions. It sounds good.
Bishop and Levelson?
No, very impressed with the program. And this year, you guys go first instead of last.
I know. I did kind of, I
You notice all the short strides?
I kind of whined a little bit about it. So I think they kind of put me first this year because of that, so.
I think Alex hit the nail on the head. The guys are doing a great job making, taking advantage. And obviously, with the list of kids that you cited for all their accomplishments, you know, they're able to take advantage of it, and then they're thriving in it. So the opportunities are there, and the kids are showing what they can do and what the district has been able to afford. So that's awesome. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bridge.
All right.
Excellent presentation. Thank you for everything that you do.
Scoot, I got to ask you one question.
Yeah.
Did you get married in that suit?
I did not, no.
Well, Dave got married just recently.
Nope.
I've never seen him in a suit before, so I didn't know if he only had because if it were me, I probably would have said yes, because I only really have the one suit.
New man, new suit. So, good evening. I'm here to present for six through 12, English Language Arts. I want to start off with some highlights and accomplishments and sort of circle back to what the superintendent was mentioning at the beginning during acknowledgements. We had an amazing poet I'm going to talk about in a minute. Mass Poetry selected Ruth Ballard's poem, "Sunday," to be published on the T. So you can see that soon, if you're stuck waiting for a train. Ruth was also a finalist in the Helen Creely Poetry Contest for her poem, "No Son of Mine." And there's a little blurb about her explaining what she was trying to accomplish with that poem. That's from the Helen Creely website. She says, "In the poem 'Sunday,' I tried to explore the essence of spirituality in southern slave communities. I wanted to capture the strength and power of faith in individuals who struggle against severe oppression and abuse, and examine how spiritual understanding can help us identify with others." So. Very noble, you know, attempt there at capturing a very complicated idea. And that's what's amazing about poetry. You can sort of crystallize a very complex idea and make it profound and make it art. With some change here, we're going to shift to some data. We did perform well with the MCAS. So you can see that 69% scored in the advanced category for ELA MCAS, 30% proficient, and only 1% with the needs improvement category. So those scores are strong, and we're continuing to improve and have more students be in the advanced category. There was a moderate gains there from last year. There's not a great deal of room to move when you're performing that well, so even a small gain is a significant one when you're performing well. Also, something I wanted to point out, my colleagues mentioned to me, nine students from English III Honors self-selected to take the AP language exam. And that is noteworthy because it shows that students who even might not be enrolled in a specific AP course feel prepared, feel like it would not be a waste of their time or their money to attempt to take that test. I thought that was interesting, and I think that speaks to their motivational levels. Also this year, in January, we hosted the MidWatch League Meeting of Regional ELA Teachers and Principals. And we hosted that, and it was a great experience. We talked about a lot of the issues we've been talking about tonight, but with a different group than I usually get together with, many English teachers as well as principals. So it was just a slightly different group than who I'm usually talking to. So it was interesting to talk to English teachers from schools that are not all that far away, but, you know, I usually don't get to communicate. And it was interesting, we had some great conversations, and I know many people were excited to attend again next year. So we hosted this year, which was great, but next year, we look forward to going to another school and visiting there. Professional development. High school members attended, high school faculty members attended Wright-Boston Workshops on Teaching Argument and Targeted Feedback. Wright-Boston Workshops demystify the writing process for students, and notably, the shift towards teaching argument, as well as strategies for teachers to write targeted feedback in their responses. At the high school, we also worked on grading calibration and talking about rubrics and how to make sure that when we are using a rubric, you know, what constitutes an A, what constitutes a B, and how we arrive at that, and having conversations about that grading process. At the middle school, teaching was aligned with the Common Core standards. So middle school teachers gained fluency in the demands of the Common Core, in particular, writing anchor standards and the tasks students will have to perform on assessments aligned to the new standards. Also talked about keywords and what they mean at different grade levels, especially words like thesis, research, et cetera, those types of words, and what those mean at different grade levels and what's expected of those words and how students use them when they're writing. Middle school teachers who attended Best Practices for Inclusion, excuse me, yep, sorry, for inclusion, that was basically working on co-teaching. And so people who attended that, they would come prepared with a lesson, but maybe a lesson that they hadn't team taught before. So I thought that was an interesting activity. So having a lesson and then figuring out, you know, how can we make this a team teaching lesson rather than, you know, starting from scratch. You know, not having to reinvent the wheel. We don't have much time, so things that we can adapt and adjust effectively, we're always looking for those opportunities. The New England League of Middle Schools, I did not attend this, but middle school teachers told me about this, and they pointed out a couple of things that they wanted me to share. So one takeaway they wanted me, for me to point out, was the concept of feedback versus assessment, especially with homework. We talked a little bit about homework and, you know, what kind of homework is assigned and what's the purpose of the homework. So discussing what constitutes feedback, what constitutes assessment, and, you know, sort of having a purposeful homework rather than just, you know, busy work, of course. Want to avoid that. Some initiatives. The middle school faculty developed a unified approach to teaching and assessing six through eight Common Core language standards. So the standards insist that instruction in reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language are a shared responsibility. So we talked about, again, certain words and what research means in perhaps a science class as opposed to an English class. There are similarities, but there are key distinctions. Also, unification within a grade as well as across grades. So looking to unify the approach to teaching those Common Core standards. The MWEA map testing was used to measure progress and to target specific needs. So these are computerized tests, and these tests are adaptive. And the difficulty of each question is based on how well a student answers all previous questions. So it's more of an adaptive, and so it's very different at the end for each student than at the first question. So it's changing there. So that was something else that the middle school was working on. Also, some fun things. Student-initiated Poetry Coffee House, that's something that we want to build upon. We have some students who are interested in that, and so maybe incorporate some music as well. So maybe a more laid-back atmosphere for students to try to get up and perform. Again, and some students are very interested in slam poetry. Ruth Ballard, of course, is interested in performing poetry, not just poetry that exists on a page. Other students are also excited by that performance piece. And so that's an outlet for that. And then also, you know, kind of thinking about Common Core, there's been a shift and a focus on nonfiction independent reading. In the past, you know, we've been ahead of the curve, so to speak. We've been focusing on nonfiction independent reading for a while because we teach so much fiction in the classroom, drama, or novels, that, you know, when there's independent reading, we really encourage students to read something that's, you know, nonfiction. That can mean many different things. Sometimes students don't realize the whole gamut of what nonfiction is. And so we've made a concerted effort to build, you know, a library of independent reading that's focused on nonfiction. There's a lot of great nonfiction out there that students might not be aware of. They might just think, oh, you know, biography on Abraham Lincoln, that might sound interesting to some of us, but not to all students. So trying to make them aware about some of the really interesting, you know, options that exist. DDMs and the ninth grade curriculum. So I want to just say thank you to Dr. Branco, because he was very welcoming and helping me work at the middle school and just sort of working as a bridge. And he was very welcoming and reminding me that you're always welcome, so I appreciated that. And so I felt very comfortable, as well as working with the teachers. They've been very welcoming, so it was great. Felt very comfortable. And we've been talking about core texts and, you know, thinking about different genres and what really aligns with the Common Core. And, you know, one conversation that came up was To Kill a Mockingbird, classic novel, of course. And we talked about how that was a summer reading text, and it was taught at the ninth grade level, and maybe it'd be a great text for the eighth grade level. And we came to a consensus that that would be a great book to try and pilot for the eighth grade. And so that's what we're doing right now. So things like that, when I say, you know, refining, you know, the assessments and refining, you know, the core text and the text choices, those are some of the things, some of the conversations we had, both at the middle school and at the high school. You know, obviously, if a text was being taught at the high school and it transitions to the middle school, that's an example of combined effort between the two buildings. Implemented DDMs using MCAS nonfiction open responses. So the DDMs, the district determined measures, we've been using MCAS nonfiction, you know, in preparation for the MCAS and also to emphasize that nonfiction piece. So that's not to say that they only read nonfiction. Of course, there's a lot, a great deal of fiction, but sort of balancing that out a little bit further. And that's basically what I have for this evening to start. Thank you.
So if you're going to take To Kill a Mockingbird down to the eighth grade this year?
Yep.
Are the incoming ninth graders going to do it for both grades one year so that we don't, one grade doesn't miss the opportunity for that great book?
Yeah. And the other thing, too, it's more complicated is just switching it out, you know. So, yeah, we have to talk about that. But, yeah, we're, it works so well in the classroom. And it can work at different levels, that's the thing. I don't think it's inappropriate for a certain grade or, you know, it has to, but it's just, we've described it as sort of like owning a text and like, oh, you know, the eighth grade owns that text of the ninth grade, and so trying to be flexible. But that's really important, especially in a small school. It's nice to sort of have a few sort of anchor texts. So at the high school, typically, Hamlet's been taught junior year. But there's no reason, just because that's been for, you know, five, six, it's been long enough. But that's not to say that conversation can't happen. And that conversation's been rejuvenated because of the Common Core.
Any idea what's going to take, if you do push it all the way down and leave it in the eighth grade, do you get any ideas of what's going to take place in the ninth grade?
Well, one possibility is Lord of the Flies. So that's one possibility, but
Let's try it a little bit.
Yeah. Well, because, and we kind of talked about how maybe Lord of the Flies was a little bit too challenging perhaps for the eighth grade.
Could make some
Yeah. Well, I mean, again, hey, independent reading, like, that's also a key. And, you know, one thing I just did want to emphasize was the idea of technology and vocabulary. And, you know, kids are really interested in all that stuff, and I think there's a nice connection there. If students are really interested in something, they're going to look it up, and it's easier to look up words. But the context, too, that's an important thing with the Common Core. So there's been a shift between memorizing a list of words, for example, for the SAT. That's changing now, so it's much more contextual. So, you know, Game of Thrones does have an amazing vocabulary, like, because it's a very, you know, different context. So, you know, they might be interested to learn a little bit more. I am actually, I'm not well-versed in Game of Thrones. I haven't had free time, but
Don't make decisions, nothing, Rick, based on what I'm
No, I was going to say, I'm guessing it's a medieval, it's a medieval sort of
Lord of the Rings type
Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured. So, but like, that context, they're going to have to know about, you know, maybe
Nothing, Lord of the Rings.
They're going to have to know about, like, words like guilt or something.
Wow. We're going to have some fun now.
I love the idea of the, well, first of all, it's good to see you.
Thank, yeah.
Actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to embarrass you just for a second. It's great to see Mr. Pascucci now here doing this kind of like sixth through 12 presentation, because if you don't recall, I attended class with Mr. Pascucci his very first day on the job, and he was my teacher. And he seems very, like, articulate and outgoing today, but at the time, he was pretty shy. I'll never forget this.
I'm still shy.
Some of my classmates from then, we talk about it still. It was, and it was in sometime in the afternoon, and he had, like, just introduced himself, you know, he's new to the district and excited, and he wanted to play something for us. I don't recall what it was. It was like a spoken poem or some music. And we had one of those little boom boxes that was sitting on a table, and he was like, so I'm going to hit play now on this recording. And as he, as his finger, the second it touched the button, the fire alarms went off. And I don't know if you remember that, but he jumped so far.
I jumped, yeah.
Because, I think he thought that you shut down the school.
Yeah, yeah. When you said you were going to tell me that memory, I was like, well, could it be an end?
But I think this is great. I'm the type of student who, when you said the Abraham Lincoln thing, I was like, yes, that sounds really fun to read. And so I think, we talked about it from the Pursuit of Excellence Task Force. They, one of the recommendations was independent reading and allowing people to sort of find their own interests. So I like that idea.
And I think with, I mean, we talk about teaching vocabulary, teaching vocabulary. I mean, it really does come down to being engaged in the text and being curious enough to say, hey, I want to look this up.
I really like the focus on nonfiction, and I know that is something that the English Department of the High School has been doing for a number of years. Dr. Backman, my first year at the high school, which would have been 2008, was Yes, I'm Young.
I didn't realize that. We weren't even in high school together.
No, we weren't. I think we missed a year. But my first year, that was the biggest shift for me. But my first year, that was the biggest shift for me was I started reading nonfiction more. And now, now it's most of what I read and I have to make a concerted, concerted effort to go the other way, to make sure that I'm balancing that out. But it was, it was, it really helped shape me, not just in terms of my writing style, which improved greatly from reading nonfiction, learning how to make an argument on, on any issue. And, and making sure that not, you're not just reading, but you're learning how to articulate these same sorts of arguments. But also in terms of, from a citizenship perspective, by broadening the horizons of our students, making sure that they understand that it's not always a right and a wrong answer. It can be a different perspective or different ways of articulating the same idea. It's really meaningful and it's something that we've done very well in middle school, at least in my experience, at the high school for quite a while.
I, I agree. I think we've been ahead of the curve with the nonfiction. So this, that shift has actually been pretty seamless.
Pretty easy. That's great. That's great. My only question is on the NWEA, I know we've talked about that a lot at this level in terms of, and also the value in, in having that information maybe throughout the year. I'm wondering two questions. When in terms of the course of a unit, are we, are we using that? Are we using that very often to see, okay, beginning of the unit, end of the unit? Beginning of the year, end of the year? Probably varies.
I'll answer that for you.
I was going to defer.
Okay, good. I, I would be really impressed if you knew that answer though, I'll tell you. We're, we're testing three times a year. So that gives us an opportunity to, through, through progression, individualize instruction.
Great, great. And is that data being useful? Because we, we are hearing a lot about, you know, overtesting, but I think that the NWEA is one of the tests that, you know, if you're going to have a test, it's one of the more effective ones to use because the questions do, they are catered. So the students are at the cusp of their abilities. They're able to, to learn more about where they are.
Well, what it, what it does is it allows teachers to have that information at their fingertips. So a simple example, a student in grade six may have mastered adding improper fractions. So the teacher will know that, that student has mastered that. So they can go on to something else or they can actually cooperative learning, have that child become a, a teacher to a few, few of the students in the classroom. We all know that if you know information enough to teach it, you really know it. So it is beneficial and what's going to be really powerful is we're going to be developing student portfolios with these scores from year to year. So by the time a student hits grade eight, we're going to have a tremendous amount of good information in terms of the progression that that student made in, in two or three subject areas. So it's a first year and there's a learning curve involved too. I mean, it's not, it's, it's easy for our teachers to pick up, but a lot of our teachers have never experienced adaptive testing before.
Right.
So that in itself is, is, you know, is new and requires some training.
And also for the students.
Right.
You know, we've talked with teachers, I mean, this is, these are tests that are given grade two through eight in Littleton. So the six to eight teachers came together and Mr. Pescucci was part of that professional development when they took a look at patterns in the testing and initial, initial test data. What we found in this district, to speak to your concern about an overemphasis on testing, this district previously used grade and G made tests that we felt at, at the time were valuable. And that's why we implemented them. However, if you talk to Mr. Farady and, and Mr. Visado and the teachers at Chaker Lane and Russell Street specifically, it's much less time now in testing and there's less test fatigue when, say math, this week in May, when math MCAS goes around, you don't have the principals and the teachers at the K five level saying, you know, there is test fatigue setting in.
It probably would be good to have a agenda item where we get a more in-depth presentation on this, especially relative to what you just said, alternative testing strategies or what we've replaced, why, what the benefit is and risks and, and, and things that we're, you know, worried about and that we're thinking about. That would be, I think, I think we could probably go on for probably 45 minutes just on that alone. And I don't want to get too bogged down.
Yeah, most definitely. We're, we're not quite ready yet. We need to.
That's fine. That's fine. That's kind of what I, I'm thinking is, we've been hearing about it and you just said it's been only a year and the staff's going up the learning curve with it. But I think that if we could just keep that in mind, then I think it would be very informative to get that after you guys have been able to really think about it and the best way to speak to it.
And then there's also another learning group for another constituent group and that's parents.
Yeah, sure.
Because this will be the first time that parents will receive the information and we're piecing that together now. In fact, the, for instance, Mr. Farady, Dr. Branko and I spent today doing that.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be the next meeting and I wouldn't really want it to be. Maybe it's more appropriate for next year.
Right.
You know, but I think, I think it would be worthwhile to, we've heard enough about it.
I will tell you anecdotally already that, you know, teachers are making lots of adjustments to instruction based on the data that comes in off of these. So you'll walk down and you'll see literature circles shifting and kids changing from one reading group to another. Or you'll see three kids go to the back of the room on Khan Academy in a sixth grade math class while 10 other kids are over here doing this and the teacher's working with a small group. And it really is, you know, a result of good assessment and good data. And we've already adjusted for the concept of test fatigue and, and, you know, time off learning, so to speak. We already adjusted from round one to round two. We had originally had hour, hour and a half, hour and a half sessions and we took the recommendation of the company and then we realized quickly that our middle school kids could do it in a typical 45 minute block without interrupting the rest of their school day. So now instead of shutting down and having it in a similar MCAS fashion, when Johnny goes to math class, that's what they do in math class that day. So it's in, out, the rest of your day moves on. And we do have a needs more time location. So if kids want to take extra time so that we can really see what they're no unable to do, we give them that extra time on their own. So we've already streamlined it in less than six months.
And that would also sound like it would reduce the stress on the students.
Right. Absolutely.
And a turn of, and a final.
And the teachers.
And the teachers. And speaking to your, you know, like a broader context about alternative testing strategies and computer adaptive testing, none of this, we would not have been able to touch the NWA map testing if the community and the school committee had not supported the upgrades in the infrastructure and the purchase of Chromebooks for students. We could not have entered this, this area.
And our network.
Would have been impossible.
I was inter, or first introduced to NWA in 1987 and I used it in a number of schools and districts. And I have to tell you, the transformational component to using it is unbelievable. I was, when I first started using NWA, we became a, a school that was offered self-paced instruction. So in ELE in math, so students could essentially progress in middle school and have finished their first two years of high school math. And we, I was fortunate, I was endorsed as a high school teacher and I could, as a principal, could give you the marks for, for high school. But it's just incredible how it transforms what happens in that classroom because you, you start thinking differently as a teacher. Now you have this, this data that shows the strengths of your students. And season teachers can pick that up, but it, it acts as a verification that yes, the student is gifted, I don't like using the word gifted, is advanced here, or they need a little bit of work here. And it's, I, I just can't speak positively enough about the differences it's made throughout time. Of course, in 87, we didn't have networks like that, like we do today. It was paper, paper and pencil testing, so.
Well, sorry to spark a bigger conversation about, about testing, but I just think it's really exciting to be in a district where in the national environment, we're actually able to use the assessment to individualize learning, rather than the national conversation is the concern of the opposite, but testing is taking away from the individualized learning. It's very exciting to be in a district where we're using the technology we've invested in and where we're using the assessment to help students get a more personalized education rather than the opposite. And I think that's something that obviously has taken a lot of work to get to and probably take a lot of work to maintain, but it's a good place to be.
Well, I mean, you don't test students into excellence. All right. You don't, you know, they don't get smarter, they don't, you know, get advanced academically by virtue of being tested more often. All right. What we are endeavoring to provide for our students are tests that teach and that direct the teaching towards targeted teaching to address student skills. That's to me, the philosophy of this district.
All right, I'll turn the podium over to Beth Morgan.
Hello, good evening. I would love to say that it's almost past my bedtime. It's not even close unfortunately, but I have a little song, I have some music to kind of re-energize and start my presentation. This is a, I couldn't resist. This is perfect for history. Okay? It's not some weird like really old Civil War song. I'm going, let's see. Oh, that's the song. Is this even on?
It is, but it's, it's not an amplifier for the room.
All right. So I'm representing the six to 12 History and Social Sciences Department. And most of my presentation focuses on all sorts of new stuff we've done this year. I do want to say that overall, our main goals are to help the kids sort of think and write like historians, to read, understand and incorporate primary sources into their writing and just have a better ability to understand those, see how history connects to life in 2015. And to, in general, I know we have had a lot of conversations this year about improving what we've done in the past. For example, last year, the summer of 2013, the high school history teachers worked on a big research curriculum on their own in the summer and then used it last year. And the teachers say that the research papers are a lot better this year. So I think that that's, you know, exciting because all that work is worth it and they do see their efforts paying off in the classroom. So, and obviously research is a skill that students need all through high school, college and as adults, a lot of them. So the first slide talks about, I called it, oh, sorry. All right, talks about experiential learning. So what can we do to make history alive and have students experience it and kind of put themselves in someone else's shoes or see, see something that is more than just reading out of a textbook or a reading? So I have, there are a bunch of debates that the high school classes have done, including, it's hard to tell, but the top picture is a student, a sophomore Vernon Gibbs. And this was, I was in Mr. Miss Guinness's class for the Andrew Jackson and Indian Removal debate. And it was awesome. And Vernon had an amazing like closing argument type that what his, where, that's what he's doing in that picture and speaking. And Mr. Miss Guinness and I were both so impressed, like we talked afterwards. It was awesome to see him two years later. A lot of them, it was great because I was like, oh, that, that one's still the same, that one's still the same. We're just, and you see some differences too. But the kids did a great job and his closing speech was, was so like passionate and fact-based and it was really, it was awesome. So I think the kids get a lot out of those types of experiences. The bottom picture is from Mr. Fostukas, his class is reenacting trench warfare, taking advantage of the heavy snows we had. I'm sure that also was something that they won't forget. And we also, I just want to add too, since I submitted the presentation, Mrs. Harvey told me that her classes are doing Pickett's Charge. So a lot of this stuff, I'm like, I would, you know, I started to like history when I was a junior because I liked, I had a really inspirational teacher. But some of the stuff that I know our students are experiencing in their history classes are, it's, it's really impressive. And I think, I think more students would have liked history growing up if they had been taught this way, but obviously biased. And so we've had some field trips listed, seventh, eighth grade, and then a US one field trip. I do want to also thank the LEF. They funded my field trip to the museum, well, helped fund my field trip to the Museum of Science as well as the Plymouth trip. They funded the genocide speaker in Facing History classes. There's also hall class speaker in Facing History classes. And Mrs. Harvey also has two grants for next year already. So I think that that connection in the, with the community is, is helping to support, you know, what we do in our classrooms and what's available, available to the students. So I know that we've benefited from that support there. And so that's, those are, that's in a nutshell, some of the experiences that the students have experienced in their History and Social Sciences classes. So the next slide talks about professional development and we had the opportunity, there was five of, seven of our department went to the National History Convention in November and we were lucky that it came to Boston and that was really cool. I'd been to a lot of middle school conferences in my recent years of teaching and so it was nice to be in a different type of environment and have it all history based. And we enjoyed, you know, albeit we were all there on the same day, so that was fun. And I think we got a lot out of it. I think some of us, or I'll, I'll just talk about my colleagues too, but I think we, people in our district have the potential to have a seminar at the national convention. I mean, they were impressive, but nothing that I don't think that myself or my colleagues could do. So honestly, like hopefully coming down there in a few years or something, we can work, we, we can work on that, work, you know, see if we can put something together, not all together, but you know, high school or middle school teachers, because I really think that we could, we could represent Littleton really well, but I like to present. I get really nervous if I like presenting anyway. So for the PD, the building base PD at the middle school, for three sessions, the whole history department worked on the flip classroom. So that was something that I, I facilitated, that continued from last year and that was nice to all work together. We all kind of, with the flip classroom, every teacher is going to implement it differently. And so it was, it was nice to work together, but also we all implement it and do it in our own way. So I think that that's something that is a strong aspect of our department. And also there were other teachers from other departments there. So I personally love the building base PD. I think the flip classroom is, can be very time consuming. I have a lot of ideas for videos and just they honestly take a lot of time to do a good job. So that type of PD is really helpful to have a couple hours to work on a video because a lot of times you kind of have to try something out and have the time to see how it's going to work or, oh shoot, ask a cop, you know, like I tried to do this, it's not working. You can ask a colleague there. So I really, I think we all benefited from that and the high school worked on Aspen Pages, which would take the place of something like Edmodo. So it's kind of like a home base for your class. And so, and to develop like a continuity in terms of platform of how we are organizing our, or how they're organizing our classes. We didn't do that at the middle school. And all of us are currently working on our DDM work. So in the history department, we don't have any, any standardized tests that would work as DDM, so they're all homemade, which I, which, you know, has it, you know, we had to kind of think hard about what we wanted to look at, but I do like that it's personal and I think that it has a lot more meaning, well, it has a strong meaning to us because we made them up. And so I'll give you some examples. One for US one is like an immigration, the immigration test. So the students took that the first day of school and then I don't know when the follow-up is, but that was one. Analyzing a primary source painting was one. And then I'm working on religious conflict. And there's a lot of other ones, but those are just some examples. And then a lot of us have also attended conferences of our own choosing for various topics. And so I think we're taking really good advantage of the $2,000 for classes and conferences. And I have probably thanked you in the past, but I know that that's unique to Littleton and I really think that that's an awesome aspect of working in Littleton. I also really like the half days and so I know that maybe some people have mixed feelings in the community or maybe even teachers, but I think that they're really valuable. And I know the town I work in, the teachers have maybe four a year. And I think, how could we do all the stuff that we do without all the days we have? So I really think they get put to good use and, and have improved a lot since when I started here back in the late 90s. And then lastly, just a bunch, some miscellaneous aspects of what we've been doing. So. some miscellaneous aspects of what we've been doing. So, Mr. Walsh and I presented at the NELMS conference in March on the flipped classroom. And Mr. Dubois presented a separate presentation, but they all centered on technology. So, it was cool that we were all there, I thought. Mr. Dubois is working with the ELA teacher on an interdisciplinary unit. That's also part of his professional practice goal. And Ryan, Mr. Walsh and I, our flipped classroom work is part of our professional practice goal. So, I think that we have made the evaluation system work for us in a really productive way. And I have really, when I bought it, like, the new system at the beginning, I really do think it's, it's helpful in having a teacher grow and focus on something and really try to improve. And summarizing is another goal that Mr. Walsh and the 6th grade team is working on. So, I think the, the 6th and 7th grade, you know, the, the team aspect of a lot of the goals is really helpful and it's great to work together. So, I just included this because I thought it was fascinating. So, maybe in 215 years from now, someone will be analyzing your reports and seeing what types of phrases and words come up frequently. None of us will be around to see that, but I, I love stuff like that. I think it's so fascinating. And I actually think we see commonalities and some similarities between 1800 and now, obviously not a ton, but there, I think there would, from my research that I did in college, I did, I had a paper I did where I found a college student from the 1800s. I was like, oh, she's saying the same things I do. And this was in the mid 90s. So, it was interesting. And then, we have a strong presence on Twitter. Some teachers, you, at least Mr. Dubois and I think, use remind.com, which is a text message, not like a text messaging system where the numbers are kept secret. And it's like a number, you get through the website that we use to remind kids or parents about what's coming up. And I'm sure there's more that I can't think of, but I think we have a strong presence in the world out there. And I'm overall really proud of the work we do. And I really enjoy my department. And that's it for this year.
Excellent. Only question is with the DDMs, because they are personalized, are they going to be, would we be able to compare them year over year in some fashion?
Yeah. So, so, in the, in the, in the DDM aspect of evaluation, you have a two-year, you keep the data over two years to get your, your impact rating. So, this is year one. And then, so next spring, we will have the two years of data to, and then the principal, the evaluator decides on our impact rating based on the data. So, and I think, so, it came up at our SDC meeting, the, the possibility of people changing DDMs. I haven't had a conversation with our department. I, I'm going to stick with mine, I think, to see, because I think that's the best way to, to see if there is a trend. I don't know what the other colleagues of mine think. But I think because we made them up, I do feel like, and a lot of them are teams. So, at the high school, if there was, if there were two US One teachers last year, they both made up the DDM. So, I have a feeling we'll stick with them, but I can't speak for the whole department at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the comments you made about the professional development time and the use of it and how it's changed over the last several years and how it seems like you guys are taking great advantage of it. And also, the, when we negotiated in the contract using funding to go outside of classes per se. I think, I think we've heard other times that it's had a positive impact. And in some ways, is, now, it just seems so obvious that the conferences and symposiums are just faster-moving than like an entire curriculum or class would be. Not that that doesn't have a worthwhile particular teacher, where he or she may be in their career. But you can see where, no matter where you are in your career, you'd always be looking to go get the next best thing and see what, and apply it to what you're already doing and continue to move forward. So, it sounds great. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are taking advantage of what we've, we've been able to do.
I mean, the conference thing is huge because I, when I first started in Littleton, we, you could go to conferences. It was, I think it was, you know, it was different and that was a long time ago. So, lots happened since then. But then, once I had my kids, I can't really take a class. I mean, I can do a distance learning class, but even then, I, I don't get enough sleep. I'm very busy. So, classes just don't always work, you know? So, I, the conferences are awesome. I went to one on the flipped classroom because I'm like, I want to see how someone else presents about the flipped classroom. And, you know, then he was like a Google-certified teacher. So, I asked Mike McCackern about that. Like, you, it starts to open up new possibilities. And I was like, I'm going to try that. It's, so, it's really, it really helps because you're not, you're not restricted to a three-month class. That's three hours, one night a week and all that stuff. So...
And you're dealing with practitioners. So, it's, it's...
Different, different learning.
Very different learning. Just a clarification on DDMs. Just want to make sure that we're on the same page. We have given, obviously, teachers the opportunity to change DDMs if they so choose. This is due to everybody. And we want to make sure that our teachers feel comfortable and feel that their DDMs are competent. And even when they get to that point, our curriculum is never stagnant. It's evergreen. So, I would envision that every two years, we would see a redesign of DDMs anyway. That would be a sign of progression as, as we continue to move forward with our various curricula. I'd like to commend our teachers. They have done a tremendous job in developing DDMs and, in a fashion that is very student-centered and has thrown aside the, the bigger media picture about one assessment and, you know, what does it really show without reliability, ability testing, and on and on and on, on and on. We've really focused on what can we do to support you and help you in your craft. And it's made a tremendous difference. And I'm just so proud of the DDMs that I'm seeing in our district. Very well done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Can I make a suggestion, given that Dr. Finney is not here, would we, and given the hour that we're at, would it be worthwhile to push this one on to the next?
We could. She will not be here next time.
Oh, it should either way.
We can still push it, push it on.
Yeah, let's do that. You guys can come back when, okay, that's great.
That's you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll push it to the next one. And then, we can maybe tweak that and do it to make sure we don't get hung up.
Sure.
Excellent. We'll get us right back on topic.
I'll try not to say standardized testing next meeting.
Alright, so we'll do the science update as part of the next curriculum. And that's great that we have that flexibility. That's a good idea. Split up like that allows us for that, that type of flexibility. Alright, superintendent's report.
I'll be very quick. First night I haven't used my iPad. And you can see that I have a lot of papers in front of me. Update on partnership with UMass Lowell and partnership with LCTV. As of today, we have 10 students interested in the nanotechnology course. And that's just initial interest. And we'll, obviously, in the next few weeks, get a firm number there. So, I'm just so, so impressed that we were able to get 10 students right away for, for something like that. It's not something that we planned in September. And so, very proud of our students for, for jumping on the bandwagon to go into a course of that caliber. 10 seems to be the number tonight. LCTV, we also have 10 students that are committed to the media program. I am still working on a way of transporting them. It's just too expensive with the bus company. For last period of the morning, they want $26,000 for the year. So, the chief, Chief King and I have been talking and they're receptive to us using their van. And now, I'm working with Principal Harrington to figure out if we can get an assistant and free them up to drive, pay them, you know, stipend for doing that. So, yeah, $26,000 is a lot of money for, for one class. But it's, it's full year. I have to remember that as well. So, things are going well there.
Can, I think it came up during something somebody was asking me about, so, the only cost that the, what's the cost, is there a cost for the students to participate in this nanotech course? Or is that something absorbed into our, part of our regular budget?
Yeah, we, we can't absorb it all into our regular budget. So, in the days of universities matching your, your funding grants, I think are over for a while. So, we've set aside $8,000 for subsidization. And we, we need to look at the demographics of the students that are enrolled. We're not going to just simply say that we have 10 students. We're going to split it up 10 ways. We're going to look at the financial situation of the families and students. But we do have some funding. My, my wish would be that we could subsidize it by 40 to 50 percent. But we'll see what our enrollment is and go from there. But there is some subsidy, which is, which is promising. For years and years, when we were doing this, universities had a little more flexibility. So, they would match your funding. So, if we put eight in, they would put eight in. And it was quite a nice way to, to defray costs.
Do, do we know what the cost per student?
$1,037, I believe it was.
Without the subsidy, without any subsidy?
Without any subsidy at all.
So, it'll go down conceivably from there, depending on circumstances and...
Right.
No, I, there's people that asked, and I just wasn't familiar with what a specific number was.
Now, if they, they opted for dual credit, which is different than what we're doing, then they would fill out the paperwork and they would be eligible for some subsidy, potentially subsidy, depending on the income levels. But we wanted something, I mean, we want both, but we felt, you know, very strongly to, about the idea of having that professor come to our school. There's just so many advantages to that. So, the blended program, it's going to be, I think, incredible, incredible experience for our students.
Yeah, no, it sounds like an exciting program and opportunity.
Any other questions on that area? The item two, shouldn't take too long. I've given you a side letter of agreement. We've been working with the committee of eight. And we've been doing that for a few years. And as you recall, when we adopted the new educator evaluation, there were some, some sections that were not in existence yet. And at that time, we had a clause in our contract that gave the committee of eight the opportunity to work together and draft language for those sections that were not in existence. This may be the last section that we need to draft. It's involved student and staff feedback. What we've done is obviously tailored it to the law. We've made sure that we had flexibility that suited our needs in our district. And remember, the teacher evaluations are confidential. So, this falls, you know, if we do any surveying, it falls under that confidentiality clause in the law. But what we wanted to, to ensure is that if we utilized micro-surveys, sometimes there, there isn't an opportunity for confidentiality, depending on how you administer a micro-survey. So, we wanted to make sure that we had flexibility to do that at the same time. And also, in certain circumstances, perhaps to department-wide surveys or even a school-wide survey. So, we, we kept this as open-ended as we could so that we had the greatest flexibility. I'm pleased with the language. And I know our president is, is with us this evening as well, Mike Gillan. And he signed off on the language already. So, I'm certainly willing to entertain any questions that you may have.
No, no, I read the thing. I'm satisfied with it. An interesting side note on, because this topic, the topic of 360 feedbacks and other things came up at work there. And they were just talking that the HR professionals are now recommending that that kind of input only be used for formative and, you know, not as part of the assessment evaluations, but more for growth and development inputs. So, they're starting to even modify the language of how they're using feedback from peers and, and direct reports in, in our cases here.
And we wanted to record it in one place so that we were consistent. So, it'll be under standard four, professional culture indicator A1, reflective practice. So, that's where that documentation is going to occur. But it can also be involved in, in any of the five steps that are involved in the evaluation process as well.
I remember being in the room at DESE talking about this, about the, not this piece of paper, but the regulations based on four years ago, and it being this whole concept that the state wasn't sure they were going to do. And I think it's important. And I'm glad that we were able to do it with a way that gives us the flexibility. I think that's very important. Just kind of need to see it, come to fruition.
I appreciate the comments you made about working in it. It meets the statute requirements, but also, at the same time, with an eye towards what's right for Littleton and what's right for our kids and stuff. So, that, I'm fine with the way it is. Mr. Gill, do you have any comments that you'd like to make in regard to it?
I don't think I do at this time. And then, to thank the committee of eight for all their hard work, time they put in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we do need a motion on that.
I will make a motion to accept the feedback language as presented and insert the applicable sections into the ELA contract.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, none. I will start signing.
Thank you. Last item on my agenda. Every year, we bring you a, a list of where some of our students or where our students are going more correctly. And you have that list in your package. And we put it up on the screen. Again, an impressive list of schools that our students are going to be attending virtually all over, over the country. What's, what's interesting for me is, is I think this was probably, it's not the first year, but we, we usually have students migrating north as well, to McGill, Dalhousie, UT. And this year, we don't have anybody going up that way, which is kind of interesting.
New Hampshire's in that direction.
Well, that's true. Go north, young man. Yes.
That's geography class, right?
So, it's always nice to, to share where our students are attending. And we've talked many times about the fact that as, as one assesses the cost of, of college, it's more than, it's more than just the school that you're looking at. You need to be looking at those costs as well. And I, I really believe that our students are becoming more critical consumers in this whole process. And when you're looking at private colleges, even in this area, 54,000 years for tuition. Then you have your public colleges costs. I, I think we're having more of those discussions than we did five years ago, seeing more of those discussions more directly. So, and I think some of that is reflected in the list that you see this year. Very proud of our students. And we have a couple up here with us. And you can see the accomplishments that they've made already. And we're looking forward to, to hearing stories from our students graduating this year and another two years or so.
Any comments on the list?
You're not going to make a public school?
Well, I noticed we were sending students to 13 of our 28 campuses.
Right.
I did count. I do think it's great. Good. And that brings me to the end of my report.
At this time, we'll take any input from interested citizens. Any interested citizens that would like to come up to the podium. Alright, saying none, we will move to subcommittee reports. CNBC, do you have any?
Subcommittee report.
Budget Subcommittee, really, the only thing to mention is that we, we did go through town meeting last week. It was a record. Got quick. And the budget was supported by the community. We appreciate that. It was a fair amount of work amongst all the boards to get it to work. And I, you know, it has been the last several years. And I anticipate that it will continue to be a fairly arduous task. But we, once again, were able to successfully navigate it. And we got the support of town meeting. I think it's reflective of, of the work we all did together. So, hopefully, that'll continue. Policy Subcommittee.
Yes. So, yeah.
Do we keep our mouths shut? I get it. I didn't get bubble gum, which would have really... So, yeah, 10 of them tonight there. I sent you, read ahead packet out early. So, you had a chance to, to pre-read most of them there. Hold on, I just lost my page. Here. Most of them were pretty minor in changes here. A couple of them we just missed. I guess the most significant one is student transportation, which is the busing one. Currently, that's spread across like five different policies. They're now just consolidated down to, to student transportation, policy, and simplified. They are basically, the philosophy that the board has been pursuing is to take procedure out of the policies and put that...
that the board has been pursuing is to take procedure out of the policies and put that squarely in the administration's responsibility. So that's basically what I did with the busing policies there. Trying to clarify a little bit of the language to make sure it reflected our practice also on, on doing the bus routes and the, and the other pieces there. The one item that was, I'll just call it grandfathered in, was buses, our buses run on green needles, which is the only private road in town that we run the buses on. Rather than trying to debate taking that out of the policy, I've left it grandfathered in there. And I think that reflects the needs of that part of town also there. But I tried to indicate the wording there, that that is a grandfathered exception, that it's not really the intent of the current board to be grant, you know, granting more exceptions to that policy there, so that people have an expect, can understand the expectation, and not see that if they're buying on a private road, that the buses are going to come down those there. Because I think it starts complicating our bus route planning on it. And then I have asked the administration that, since they are setting the, the routes and the procedures, that they document the procedures, and that they grant time, time-limited exceptions for that, that they document it, so that when, if we get challenged on why is the bus doing this, there's a, a policy, our policy is, is that they document it and time-limited, and we refer them there. And then our role is that they're consistently enforcing that, not, we're not micromanaging bus routes.
Another gray grid.
Well, it's not also not our role here. It's to provide clear direction to the superintendent. We, we went through this a couple of times here, and I think it reflects the, you know, reflects the current practice, and provides them the flexibility and the direction there. So with that, I, I gave the proposed motions are in the, in the piece there. And I think I'll report that when I started this process four years ago, we had 284 policies. With this here, it'll bring us down to 175. And I have six policies that are straggling right now that we'll, we'll clean up probably by the end of the summer. And then start the process all over again.
Kind of the job.
But if you look at, look at the three roles of the school committee, that is one of the major ones.
Darrell, thank you for, for your work. I mean, we, you created an excellent system that is going to allow us to continue to do this with a tried and true methodology. It's, I still say you need to take this on the road and present it. MASC, because it really is very well done.
Thank you.
Before we proceed to the motions, in, all of these are first reading, so nothing's going to change tonight. But is there any discussion or comments?
No.
I don't either. I appreciate the effort. I think we've been very consistent as we kind of get to the end here. I think that's really the point, is we've been very consistent. You've implemented a process, and we've held to it. And I think we're a district, I know the administration primarily are the beneficiary. I mean, we get the ancillary benefit of good policy and procedure, but you guys are the ones who get, it makes it easier to go ahead and do your job day in and day out. So it's worthwhile.
And then the, the one thing that Kelly and I talked about, we've been talking about it several, the, our policy meetings here, is, is sort of highlighting, and I think he's independently developing it, this is superintendent's procedures manual.
Yep.
So that we can have these consistently documented for all the procedures that he's not only responsible by policy, but by law.
That's a great extension.
And then as we have transitions, either we hire new staff, there's already a documented path of that. You know, in the eventual time, you know, when our superintendent moves on, there, we have a continuity package already in place there that we don't have to start from.
It would probably be beneficial at some point to have a review of that, or a presentation of that for our edification, so that when we're interacting with the community, you know, we can explain, well, this is why we know how he does what he does, because it's written down. It's not like he's just, you know, sitting there and, you know, ruling on a whim, so to speak.
It doesn't work that way.
You better not. Or we would be remiss.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Yep.
Motion to accept for first reading the following reviewed policies, EEA, EEAE, and EEAG.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept for first reading the following revised policies, BA, EEAA, and GBEC.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept for first reading the recommendation to rescind the following policies, EEAA-1, EEAA-R, EEA-EA, and EEA-EA-1.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other business that we need to transact? Kelly, well said.
Yeah, you bet.
Just maybe a reminder that our next meeting?
Yeah. So we meet in two weeks on May 28th. We will be here at 7:00. Prior to that, at 6:00, we will be up at our old haunt, High School Library Seminar Room for our annual retirement cake reception. This year, we have three teachers who have announced their retirements, Mrs. Marie Enjemy, Mrs. Cheryl Strickland, Mrs. Marley Roberts. This is open to the public. I'm sure that any students or families that feel like they have a terrific interaction, any of those three teachers, or all of them, are free to come welcome and celebrate their retirement. We'll all be there. If we can, if we can make it, we should make it. And then it'll be from 6:00 to 6:45. And we'll come down here for our meeting on May 28th. That's in two weeks. Okay? All right. I appreciate everybody being here. Thank you. We actually do pretty good, considering. A lot of work done. So we don't need executive session tonight?
No, we don't.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Do we, do we want to hold that for another four minutes?
What are we good for that?
Just 10 o'clock. I'm kidding.
Well, I vote.
Yeah.
Seconded, motion made a seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.